Hello Wakefield, I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council October 12th at 7:01 into order. Let's take the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our attendance. I see Counselor Smith Galvin, Counselor Chines, Counselor Dennehy, Counselor Dubrowski, and Counselor Vincent and myself. Those six are present. And we will go to item four, public engagement. And I believe we have friends of the late Quant Howard here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Town Councilors. Forgive us a couple of minutes, three minutes, I'm told. We're here to talk to you tonight. Wanted to let you know that we're having our annual breakfast on November 6th from 7:30 to 11:00 a.m. at Bear Hill Country Club. Some of you might have got this newsletter either mailed to you or you perhaps got it electronically. The tickets are $25. And you can go to our website and buy tickets. So we want to, it's the first breakfast since 2019, obviously because of COVID. Typically get about 150 people to attend and people come and go, as you know, continuously through the morning. We do have a program that we present, the Annual Gertrude Spaulding Award. And we'll have music and we'll have raffles and we'll have great food and great camaraderie. So we hope you'll come. We've invited our legislative team. Madam Chair, we hope you'll say a few words during the presentation of the awards and things like that on behalf of the town. So we hope that you all can make it. The other thing, just wanted to share with you quickly, it's also, I put a newsletter in front of each of you. Wanted to point out that a couple of recent beautification efforts that we've done at the head of the lake, specifically at Spalding Park, right behind the Gertrude Spalding Stone. It's a beautiful area. Again, you can see them in the pictures. And that effort was done in collaboration and Joe Conway's here, which is great, because I told him I was going to mention his name anyway. But collaboration with the DPW, Joe and Bill Renault and Dennis Fazio, for their collaboration and cooperation, their suggestions, because we had other ideas about some plantings around the flagpole and they've given us some different ideas that we're going to do in the spring based on their feedback. But if you go down and look at this area now, it's going to be beautiful in the spring when all those, I think there's 60 some odd plants. Rob Weddick also, Board of Directors with me. I think the 60 some odd plants that went on both sides of the stairs, it's going to be absolutely spectacular. We also had great volunteerism from Weston and Sampson and Redding. And they've helped us on several lake cleanup projects and things like that. And they did a lot of the planting, which was wonderful. And the last thing I want to mention also in collaboration with the DPW is four new trees had been planted on the perimeter of the, with the flagpole and the bricks by the lake guard. So that area is kind of stark. I mean, it's a lot of open green space, but not very inviting. And four sugar maples were planted there a couple of weeks ago. And the leaves are already turning on them, the leaves that are there. And in time, those trees will really complement that area. And, you know, again, I think overall making a much more inviting area for people to come in, you know, something brings more beauty to the lake. So breakfast, breakfast, breakfast. We hope you all can make it and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to us.
No, thank you so much. And I'm just going to do the job of our clerk. Can you just state your name and your address for our records?
Hi Sheri. I'm Bill Boudry, 25 White Circle.
Rob Weddick, 29 Walden Road.
Thank you. It is a fabulous breakfast, a fabulous organization. All of us have gone in years past. It's actually the, one of the first groups I joined when I moved to town. So really excited that it's back in person and really appreciate all the collaboration you talked about with the town and with Joe and DPW and his team. So that
Yeah, very grateful for that.
is great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Okay. Oh, Sheri, do we have anyone else for public comment?
I don't have anybody tonight.
Great. Okay. I believe we can move to item 7A. So we will have 460 Main Street discussion.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for coming. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address for our records and then
My name is Tom Colonna. I'm an attorney in Linfield, 26 Main Street, Linfield. I live in Linfield too. This is Mr. Alex Cidos.
My name is Alexander Cidos. I'm the landlord of the property 460 to 470.
And my name's Andrea Cidos. I'm his son. And I'm a developer as well.
Attorney Mullen passed along the invitation to come here and answer questions. We're here because we want to hopefully show you Mr. Cidos' good intentions. He's, if I can give some context, I think a lot of people in the town know the property and want to see it fixed up and made into something that's not an eyesore, something useful and rentable and vibrant. And Mr. Cidos, I've represented Mr. Cidos the last year. And unfortunately, when he bought the property years ago, it was contaminated. So he has spent a lot of money and a lot of time, you know, hiring people to clean it up and get what's called a permanent solution. So a year ago, he hired me and said, can you help me with this? Because I'm not getting to the finish line with ComTec, which is a company that he had hired. So the problem was that he had to go into his butters' property to get it finished, because it was, the contamination had seeped into the butters' property. So I contacted, Mystic Industries owns the budding property and the Marcus Brothers are the owners of that company. So I contacted their lawyer and I spoke to Mike Murphy. And I said, you know, I said, Mike, what can Mr. Cidos do to get this finished? He goes, well, he's got to get a licensed site professional and get it finished up and, you know, get the permanent solution. I said, well, who would you recommend? Because he's had someone that hasn't really done the job. So he recommended a guy named Brian Moore, Carriage House. And Mr. Cidos, when I went to Mr. Cidos, the first thing he said was sure, hire who you have to hire. Mr. Cidos had put up $50,000 in escrow, held by Mike, Attorney Murphy of Mystic Industries, to finish up the cleanup. So I hired Brian Moore based on Attorney Murphy's suggestion. And he finished, it took him a few months, of course, but he actually did get a permanent solution on the property, which was done just in August. And we submitted it to the state, the DEP approved it, and it's on file there. So he's got that big step done, that 21E step done. And it's taken him a long time to get to this point. So now he's at the point where he's got the property cleaned up and he wants to be able to work with the town, the different agencies of the town to get this property presentable. And he has two options that he, that he talks about. His second option, not his first option, his second option is to sell it. But his first option is to, because this is what he is born to do, he wants to fix it up and rent it. He and his son are real estate guys. And that's what they do. They buy a property to fix it up, they rent it. They're not into flipping and things like that. So that's where he is today. We had a Zoom meeting back in February with a lot of the agencies of the town discussing what he has to do and A, B, C, and D. And back in February, they were upset with the status of the building. And they said, he's got to shovel the snow, because there was snow on the sidewalks. He's got to board it up, because it's, you know, the fire department, Chief Sullivan was nervous about it and said, we don't want our firemen going in there. So we're going to have to exit, which, you know, there are big Xs there saying it's dangerous to go in. I don't want my fire department employees going in there. So within a day or two, he had hired a company to board it up. He padlocked the doors, so secure, make it secure. He had shoveled, got the snow shoveled. And he's trying to comply with what the town wants him to do. So that was back in February. So it's taken us months to finish up the cleanup, the permanence, get the permanent solution, et cetera. And so where we are today is, he'd like to be able to fix it up and rent it. And he has some plans with him, although it's not, not the latest thing that he had done in the past. I'm not sure whether this is the meeting for that. But I just wanted to give you some context of, you know, this guy has not been just sitting, doing nothing, just letting the property appreciate, which it has, but, but he's not the type to do that. He wanted, he wanted to do something with the property for years, but wasn't able to finish it. You know, it could be a language barrier. I'm not sure really what happened. But anyway, here we are now and it's in good shape to make the next step. So with your help, hopefully he can make the next step. And with his son's help, his son's a, like I said, a real estate guy too. So we're here to answer questions. If, you know, I'm sure you have questions, so.
Counselor Chines and Counselor Dubrowski.
Sure. Could, could you describe to some extent sort of what exactly you mean by fix it up? You know, what is the plan from a renovation standpoint? Is it just, you know, kind of like a paint and windows kind of plan? Or is it, you know, an expansion and sort of building? What, what do you see as the end state for the property, both in terms of the work that you're going to do and also the types of tenants that you're, you're looking to bring in?
He would renovate the existing storefronts, do a new facade. And what he would like to do is, on the second floor, there's about 11,000 square feet, as well as in the back of the retail stores, he would like to put apartments, one bedroom apartments, 15, 16, depends how many
Depends what they're going to give you.
How many we can get in there. So it would be a complete makeover of the building.
But it would be the existing footprint of the building, existing shell of the building, if you will?
Correct.
And, you know, where, I mean, do you have potential tenants lined up or tenants that you're looking to, to bring in? You know, I guess, talk to me about sort of what you see as the process once it's renovated for actually activating the building in terms of getting the storefronts.
The storefronts, we would advertise it on the MLS, because we have a lot of experience doing that with multiple properties. As far as the rentals, the apartment rentals, it's a very, it's a very vibrant market for apartment rentals. So that's not going to be an issue. And we figured we're better off doing one bedrooms instead of doing two or three bedrooms, because it puts a toll on the school system. And it's less parking. And we might be able to get about 15 to 16 parking spaces in the back of the building.
Okay, so there is parking in the back of the building too?
Well, there's about seven or eight right now. But we have an idea how to add additional.
And can you talk a little bit about sort of the timeline that you're looking at for all of this?
It would take about a year and a half for the whole process from beginning to end.
That timeline starting now?
Starting, once we get approvals, if we get approvals, then we're taking a year and a half to do the actual work.
And in terms of getting the approvals, I mean, are you prepared to, you know, file plans with the Board of Appeals? And where are you in terms of starting that process?
Once we know we're moving in the right direction, we'll hire the architect, we'll make the plans, and then we'll start the process with approval.
And again, from a timing standpoint, any, I mean, you know, we're not the board that, you know, kind of approves or denies these types of permits. So I guess, you know, in terms of hiring the architect and getting the plans in shape to file, is that something you're working on now? Or?
We haven't worked on that yet. We have a general idea, because we have plans that we did several years ago. It would take about four to five months for approvals, as well as the architectural plans.
So then, just again, apologize for being a little sort of pedantic with this. So, you know, four or five months, you figure that takes us until about March or so. You'd expect to file then, you know, with ZBA or, you know, whoever you need to file with, you know, call it another, you know, three or four months for processing then. And then you're looking at about a year and a half after that?
Correct.
So I guess in the meantime, so, you know, that, that puts us out, you know, about two years from today in terms of a use, a productive use of the building. What, what are you prepared to do in the meantime? Or what do you have planned to, you know, quite frankly, you know, dress up the building a little bit so it's less, less of an eyesore than it is? I mean, you know, a number of us commented on, you know, when we had the Fourth of July Parade and we were sitting in the review stand right across the street from the building. I mean, it's a terrible backdrop, right? I mean, you know, I don't think I need to tell you that. And, you know, when you look at the vibrancy in that area and the successful businesses on both sides of the buildings, you know, it's a shame that we've got this sort of black hole in the middle of an otherwise thriving block of businesses. So, you know, understanding that there's work that needs to be done in the building and obviously you're not in a position to rent it for some time, I guess, what are you prepared to do to at least, you know, dress it up and make sure that it isn't as, as much of a detriment to that area of town as it is today?
As far as the retail part, that can happen a lot quicker, because the layout's already there. So we would liven that up. The apartments would take longer. So as far as the retail part, we're talking maybe five to six months to get them live. So that, that would brighten up the area. And that's the part you see from the sidewalk.
And is there anything, I mean, obviously, you know, you've got to pull permits to do renovation work there. But is there anything from that, in terms of the retail section, is there anything that would need any sort of special permit or any longer process? I mean, is that something that you'd be able to activate and kind of get permitted for relatively quickly, just given that you've already got a footprint there for those?
For the retail part, obviously, it's been empty for more than two years. We would need permission to liven that up. But if we got that permission, that would be the only obstacle in instituting the retail back into existence.
Yep. And I guess the question is, do you need to hire the architect? You know, I mean, I know there's some planning that you'd have to do, but is, is that sort of an architectural redesign that you're looking at for the retail space? Or is it, again, you know, just kind of renovation and bringing everything up to code and up to?
It would be, it would bring up the code. We would use the existing layout of the retail stores and just do like a new facade.
So I guess where I'm going with this, and I apologize, you've all been very patient as I've asked all these questions. But I guess, you know, my, my ask would be, you know, anything, you know, understand that the housing part of the project takes a longer period of time and is more involved. And I get that that, you know, involves architectural work and so forth. Anything that we can do to accelerate activating the retail space and cleaning up that space so that it, again, just becomes part of a vibrant neighborhood, anything that you are able to do to get that process underway now, I think would be appreciated.
What we would need is, we would need to reactivate the electricity, the fire department, the building department, would have to be in agreement. Once we did that, we could take the plywood off the storefronts and we could turn the lights on and start the process of bringing light back to that part of Main Street.
And you're prepared to, you know, do the work to actually get the, I mean, obviously, you've got to meet with the building department. But again, you have contractors lined up who can come in and do that so you get things coming quickly.
Full crews.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dubrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for, for coming tonight. Directed first year attorney. Help me understand again, when was the cleanup begun?
The contamination cleanup was began, begun, began years ago. And he spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years trying to get
Seven hundred, seven hundred.
Okay, there it is, $700,000 cleaning it up over the years. The company he hired, I think, dropped the ball. And at some point, they stopped working on it. And it took a while for him to realize that they weren't going to come back. And, like I said, I was hired about a year ago. And I went right to the horse's mother, went right to the butters and found a guy that they recommended to do it. So the contamination, the cleanup was started years ago. And I can't say exactly why it took so long, but he had hired someone and paid a lot of money to get them done. And they kept, you know, taking money and taking time. And fortunately, you know, unfortunately, he had to pay it. Fortunately, he had the money. He didn't, you know, some other owner in another situation might have just lost the property completely in foreclosure. But he kept plugging away and paying the guy, paying the company money. And that's, you know, unfortunately, that's where, that's where he was a year ago when I, when I stepped in.
I mean, I can respect your role. You came in as an attorney a year ago. And so I'm not faulting you for anything prior to that. And I recognize that you have clients. I'm an attorney. I understand you represent your client's interest in putting the best spin on things to try to be persuasive. But I find it incredibly hard to believe that for one second, there's any sincerity with what you're presenting to us tonight. I'll be candid. You know, you're talking about suddenly you're coming in before this council and now it's nothing but, oh, all these great things that are going to be happening in rapid, in rapid time. This property has been, to use your word, an eyesore for years, many years. And now suddenly, you have an interest and a care to try to make sure that it's spruced up in a matter of, of months? I don't believe it. I, I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's any actions in good faith. If I'm in faith, you can respond. I don't believe there's any actions in good faith to support the contention that it was because of a cleanup issue that this sat as it did for as long as it did. First, sir, you're a businessman. You know there were remedies available.
Yes, yeah.
You had attorneys at your disposal that would have been able to pursue action against the cleanup crew if, if it in fact was what it was. What candidly, what it presents to me, and I think a lot of the people in this community, is something you were sitting on this.
I would like to say something else. I don't want to, I know, I find out that fire department had records there, was, for a long, long time there. They cleaned, but they missing thousand gallons under the ground. I don't know why. I don't know why they put an prison door to clean. They come to clean. I pay all this money, you know what I mean? The time, the headache, stress, you know what I mean? Terrible.
Sir, you have been representing that this contract, that this, this property has been under contract multiple times. You've represented to town officials, including our town administrator, that this property has been under contract for multiple times. Every time that you're questioned about the status of things, the answer is very different. And it's not the same. And I keep hearing from even prior attorneys proceeding you.
When you say under contract, what do you mean by under contract?
Under agreement, under agreement for sale. I should be, I should be clear on that. Am I wrong that you had, you have represented to our community multiple times that it was either nearing or under agreement to be sold to someone else?
What happened was, he wasn't able to clean it up fast enough.
Very hard to find people.
Then the deal fell apart.
And you're saying that suddenly, that this property has sat for years, not fully cleaned, and it took your now current attorney to have to go and ask the neighbor for a recommendation in order to get this cleaned up?
Another thing too.
That doesn't make sense.
You know what I'm saying? The, I will say for my property, go to the neighbor, next door.
Right.
Now I clean him too. That's why it takes a long time, you know what I mean?
Well, but, but your, your attorney just represented tonight that in fact, that didn't take a long time. That in fact, it was because of your neighbor who identified this alternate company to do the cleanup, that actually expedited it to conclusion.
Well, the first company they hired, they wouldn't accept, they wouldn't accept it, because they wanted a, they wanted a document called a permanent solution. And that's what I found out when I got involved in it. And, and I think you mentioned it's under contract, which, which, which sounds like a seal contract. Is that right?
In fact, it has been represented to our, our town administration that it has been under contract or about to, to be signed under contract. And Mr. Mayo, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, a number of times.
A number of times over the year.
Including the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes, the Boys, there was, there was a story on the front page of the Wakefield item now years ago, talking about the Boys and Girls Club coming in.
Until he cleaned up the contamination.
Right. And you're telling me that it took, literally, you're saying that, I don't know, we, we paid all this money to this company. We didn't pursue legal action. We didn't find another alternate company. And we allowed this to continue to be the case until suddenly, we have our current attorney come in to ask the neighbor who's going to be able to clean the property? That doesn't make any sense.
It does make sense. I'll tell you why it makes sense. Now, we're at the end of the journey. It's cleaned. There was a language barrier. He doesn't have the skills you have to navigate. And he doesn't know how to go about making, you know, this is his first time having experience with contamination.
Has he had attorneys before, before this, this gentleman tonight?
Not the contamination.
Has he had attorneys before this gentleman tonight?
Not the contamination. It's the first time he had a contamination issue.
Are you, are you honestly expecting us to believe that over all of these years, a man who is well enough resourced to be able to spend $700,000, he's claiming, on, on cleanup, that he didn't have the business sense or the ability to engage the services of an attorney to address the issues that have been far along standing?
He had a previous attorney that didn't follow it through. Then he hired Tom. Tom followed it through. We're at the end of the journey. It's clean now. What else can we tell you?
What you can tell, what you can tell us is why it's taking all these years to get it to be cleaned.
Well, first of all, first of all, Mr. Cidos, let me, okay. Not that you'd be glib about it, but, but, you know, for someone to be able to come up with $700,000 over the years, it's very unusual, it's very rare, very difficult. So Mr. Cidos, it wasn't like, okay, let's, let me spend $700,000 and they get it fixed up next month or in a couple of months, in a few months. That's not the way it went down. He, he spent a lot of time and a lot of money over the years trying to get it cleaned up. And it just takes time.
But your rationale wasn't that he was financially strapped and that's what caused the delays. Your rationale was that the company that was hired was not able to complete the work on the timeline that it was expected to be and that he kept waiting for it. So I can understand if you came in here tonight and said, you know what, this man was without the resources to be able to do this. This is why it's taken years. That is not what you said, this man, and sir, do you own the property?
He didn't have it.
Did you have, at any point, did you not have the ability to complete the project if the prior company was able to do it?
I tried the best I can, believe me.
With, 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 it was never a question of money, correct?
It's not about money.
Money, no money.
Exactly.
He had a fourth grade education. He did the best he could.
He did the best he could. You're, you're now trying to tell us that we're supposed to have all this faith that within the next few months, we're magically going to have these incredible storefronts of property, mind you, that I know from the Boys and Girls Club experience, is in very bad shape. The police, the fire department has also spoken to the condition of the property inside. And you're having us try to believe in our community, believe that now suddenly, because you're before us tonight, you have these magical plans that within the next few months, we're going to have these storefronts that are going to be rentable and these apartments where you're going to be doubling the parking spaces? After, after years, years of every one of us in our community driving past this eyesore, after years of you committing to our, our town administrator that it was under contract to go and be sold? And now suddenly, it's all going to be good? How, how can you possibly expect we have any trust or faith in this?
Before, he couldn't pull a permit to do an U R, because it was contaminated. Now that it's clean, he can pull a permit.
I understand what you're saying about it being clean. What I'm saying is that there has, you have provided no plausible explanation as to why from the time Moleese moved out of that, and I'm not pointing at the Moleese Building, because that's too good of a restaurant to be associated with what we're talking about here. But from the time that that restaurant left that, left that place until the present, you're claiming the best that you could do to get cleaned was just now have it cleaned. I don't believe that. I don't believe that for a second. I don't imagine most of my colleagues believe that. What I think is that you've sat on this property, you've acted in bad faith, you've been a bad neighbor to our community. And now you're coming in and saying, oh, no, it's all clean now. So just give us a few months and everything will be great again. I don't buy it.
He had signed P and S's before.
Yes, exactly, which, which indicates.
Because it wasn't cleaned.
So now that, now that it is cleaned, I would imagine that, you admit, the value's gone up. You have a clean property.
The value's going down now. Interest rates are going up. So we can argue that too.
You have the permits, right? You have all the clearances now. So what is holding you back from selling this to another purchaser then? What is holding back a sale at this point?
It's up to him. He could sell it.
Then I give enough money, that's all right. You know, I spent so much money, I cannot take my money back. I spent a lot of time working hard, electricians, plumbers, you don't believe.
But you were, you were under contract multiple times prior. So clearly, that, those costs of cleaning were factored into those, to those purchase and sales.
Point of information, I think under contract has a legal definition. And I guess I would actually like that question to be answered as to whether, because, I mean, we've heard rumors. And again, I'm not, I don't want to throw you off of your question.
I'm saying representations to our town administrator.
I understand. But I guess I just would like to make sure that I understand the facts, because I think that words matter here and terms matter. So I guess if you could explain, so again, we have had representations, you know, that there has been, there have been buyers in the wings. I don't know that we've been, I don't know if we've gotten a representation specifically that it's been under contract or, you know, or something prior to that. But I, could we actually, could you share what the history is relative to the sales process?
Boys and Girls Club had it under agreement. And I think like two weeks before the closing, they brought up the environmental. They said, you can't close on it until you have a clean 21E.
Okay.
So he's, he scrambled to have it cleaned. The company he hired was ComTec, their local. And I wasn't involved. He handled it on his own. So I don't know, obviously, it took a long time for ComTec to do the work. And at the end, Tom, who actually finished it?
Brian Moore.
So Brian Moore took care of it. So I'm getting involved now. So he had an agreement with Boys and Girls. And then he had recently with
Yeah. Being involved in a year, I, I've been dealing with a, with a particular buyer who Mr. Marino has been dealing with for years. Okay, so I wasn't privy to the Boys and Girls Club information. I wasn't there. But, but the fact is that they could have pulled the trigger and took on the burden of doing the 21E, finishing it up themselves. And so could the last buyer that we had.
The Boys and Girls Club.
Steve Mayo knows the buyer, Anthony Marino, has been, been, been dealing with, trying to negotiate with Mr. Cidos for years. And he didn't, he never wanted to pull the trigger, which is his And, and he didn't, he never wanted to pull the trigger, which is his right. I mean, I can't force him to, to sign a P and S and take it on the 21E. The last time I spoke to him was in, was in, before, or July, I think, there was a P and S ready to go, but he had all these conditions. I said, you know, I, I talked to him one to one. I said, Anthony, if you pull the trigger, we're going to get this cleaned up according to Brian Moore, who is the favorite person of the, of the Abuddas. He's very optimistic about it. If you want Mr. Citos to sign it, he's ready to, to sell it for the, for the figure that you, that we negotiated. But he wouldn't, he wouldn't do it without, he wanted a 21E done. It's his right to do that. But it's, it's, he wanted no risk. He wanted Mr. Citos to take all the risks, so that's why it wasn't done. I mean, he would have sold it then.
So, so just getting back to, again, the clarification, so if I'm understanding, so the property's been under agreement twice, once with the Boys and Girls Club and once with Mr. Marino.
Mr. Marino, what, the P and S was not signed. It wasn't under agreement.
So it wasn't actually under agreement?
Boys and Girls Club is different. I don't know if.
Signed off.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I apologize for the interruption.
But we were talking about the Boys and Girls Club. How many years ago was that now?
Um, five, six years ago.
It was about six years ago, wasn't it? So you're saying, and, and this, this issue of cleanup was raised six years ago.
Correct.
In, in conjunction with the Boys and Girls Club. And you're expecting us to believe that from 2016 until now, you were without the ability to recognize that you could get this cleaned up? Sir, you yourself identified you're a developer.
Correct.
So are, like, this, this seems just so beyond the pale that it's even possible that it's, that you would have a site sitting for six years and claiming, well, this Com-Tank didn't come back, so then we had to ask the neighbor for a recommendation.
That's recently.
Yeah, but, but I'm saying, well, what about the last half decade?
They strung him along all this time.
But what about the half?
We're going to do this, we're going to do that. It never happened. These are facts.
If you could ask the question, let them answer it.
I'm just giving you the facts. You can spin them how you want to spin them, but these are the facts.
I understand these are the facts, but what I'm asking you is, you're, you're expecting us to believe that when this was flagged to you six years ago, that you have waited now six years?
He didn't wait. He, 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 he was paying. They would do some work, they would stop, and then it was that again. He was not familiar with the environmental process.
Are you?
Somewhat.
You're a developer, aren't you?
Yes.
So you're telling me you somewhat developed, you're somewhat familiar with the environmental process as a developer?
I haven't had any environmental issues. The buildings that I built, they were clean land, but he handled this on his own.
Well, he did it. He had an attorney as you represent, and in fact, he had an attorney at the time of the P and S and, and, and the offer that was accepted from Boys and Girls Club, right?
For, for a sale, correct, but not for the environmental.
And once that was, once that was identified as the impediment to sale six years ago, and didn't he also have another attorney who came into the mix between six years and, and within the last?
Correct. He had an attorney that tried to help.
And, and that, and you're saying that, that attorney over half of a decade could do nothing with a well-respected cleanup company to be able to resolve the issue or find a replacement?
It was very slow, and then my father hired Tom, who was more involved.
Very slow. It was, it was, we're talking this, this property has been vacant for how many years now?
Have, have you dealt with environmental?
That's not, I, I'm not, I'm not the one answering the questions here. How many years has this property been vacant?
Six, seven years.
Well, the Boys and Girls Club offer was about six years ago, and it was vacant prior to that, so at least seven, right?
And there was other issues too. Jack, the previous building inspector, wouldn't give him occupancy to put in new tenants because there was an issue with the, there was a decision a long time ago. It was never recorded, but the alley needs to be widened, so part of the building needs to be cut off to allow for a fire truck to go in the back. And Jack made that a sticking point.
So why, at this point, since the environmental is cleaned up, and you've obviously entertained offers as recently as this summer, why is, why is there not a for sale sign on that building right now?
A for sale sign?
Yes.
Because, because he owns the building. He wants to develop it.
Like, house look now look lousy. We cannot sell this. Look bad. You take the windows out, clean them up, and after we see what you gonna do, fix it or sell.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Counselor Dennehy?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Is that you said that the plan is, well, now you're saying maybe sell, but before you were saying that you were going to develop the property and then rent it? Is one, is how are you identifying people to rent it? Because typically, is it any, when I've rented office space, I've had the office space built out for my needs. Like, I see an empty space and then they build it out. I know people who have owned restaurants, they go to a space and they say, I want this restaurant, I want it built up, but you're talking about doing the renovation to the building and then renting it, and it just seems like that's backwards for retail space.
With the retail storefronts, you would do a white box, and then the apartments, there would be one bedroom apartments?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
There, there won't be any offices there, so.
No, not off, I'm just saying is that if a business, if a restaurant want, if you're configuring this space, aren't you limiting the opportunities of who you're going to be able to rent it to? Wouldn't you want it to rent it and then, and then fit the space to the property that wants to rent it?
Usually, I own 1,200 rental units. Usually, you, you create the white box and, and then you, you bring the tenants in.
And then, and then they configure the internal space.
They do it that way. They do it that way.
So you do that. Do you have any ideas of what type of businesses have expressed an interest or?
You know, you have like a restaurant.
A lot of business coming in.
Whatever makes sense.
You have salon, barber shops.
A nail salon.
Ice cream, restaurant.
Similar to what you have now on Main Street.
I don't have this. I got more buildings around. I know what you're doing, you know what I mean?
Where do you have buildings?
Everywhere. Malden.
And what's in Malden? What do you have there?
You know it? You know Malden?
A little bit.
Main Street, next to Holgreen, the whole block in mine. I have another block, Ferry Street, 105 Ferry, I got one black there too. I have another black Song Scott. I have another plaza up to the Soundford. Everett. I work there.
So, sir, I, I know.
I work there, believe me. I'm not lazy guy. I'm working, I'm eighty-six years now. I'm still old.
So, so thank you for sharing all of that. I think, you know, it's, it's heartening to know you have all those other properties. I think you hear our frustration because it's been seven years of this dilapidated, actually like, you know, harmful building at risk, what's the word I'm looking for, like a dangerous property. And it is, and it's been seven years, and I'm really glad that you have an attorney on board. I'm upset that it took a meeting in February with our Chief Sullivan and Chief Scory to get you guys to come here in seven years. And I, the anger and frustration is a little bit that you do this for a living. You've done it, as you said, for eighty-four years.
This is my goal, you know what I mean?
So, so it's a little frustrating.
I got stuck here.
To hear that it's been this long, and, and so you're hearing that frustration.
I, I agree. I, I, I take pride in ownership, so I'd be upset too.
I mean, you, you have not been a great neighbor to anyone in our town.
I totally agree. He wants to make, make it right now. Now he has the ability to because it's been cleaned.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, and so, so you understand, you understand where the doubt is just coming from, so.
I don't blame you. I understand.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of questions.
He wants me to handle it. That's why I'm.
Yeah, he gotta help me because this all he handle for me, I don't.
I didn't catch your last name, Tom, but I did catch your first name.
Corona.
You indicated a couple of times that you achieved permanent solution. Is that a written document, and if it's a document, is it on file with the town?
It's on file with the state. It's D E P.
With the state, okay. And do you know how old the building is?
I think it's like nineteen thirties. It was built in three inch.
Very strong building.
Nineteen thirties. Do you anticipate, some other buildings in town have been trying to do renovations recently for housing purposes, and they've run into difficulties with renovations on electrical work, plumbing work, sewer. Do you anticipate how much work you might have to, since that's been dormant for a number of years and had a contamination issue? Do you have an appreciation of how much renovations you might have to do in a myriad of areas like electrical and plumbing?
As far as the electrical, maybe four, five years ago, he put in a whole new electrical service in, as well as a transformer. As far as, the building is sprinkled.
It's okay.
Structurally, it's sound. The last time I saw it. It's only two floors, so it's.
All right, thank you.
A lot easier to, to work on a two-story structure.
Counselor Smith-Gavin?
So you said you, the last time you saw, when was the last time you were inside?
Myself personally?
Yes.
Maybe a year and a half ago.
Okay, okay, because I was in it at the time that the Boys and Girls Club were looking at it.
These people, they have.
Yeah, I'm by no means an expert, but it looks like it needs a lot of work, and I'm not going to rehash everything that I said. I mean, most certainly, the community is frustrated. I'm very happy that it's cleaned up and that you have the D E P, and I think the proof is in the pudding. I, I, you know, this is your private property. We expect you to be good neighbors. We want to help you be, you know, we want to help you succeed. And so I don't know what are, you know, what processes we can demand of you, except that I would ask that you continue to come here and give us updates and tell us if you have problems and, you know, try to do the best you can to remedy this. And it's going to take a long time to build trust in this community again.
Well, we, we can come back in a couple of months, let you know what progress we've made on all these, all these fronts that we've been talking about. I mean, the, the last buyer that wanted to buy it didn't want to close until next May. So you can see where some of these things take a lot of time. He could have signed in July but didn't want to, he could have signed and, and had us on P and S in July, but he wanted to close in May with, with the conditions of, you know, several conditions, one of which was a 21E. So we just thought that he should have signed because we did clean it up in then, in May. But he didn't want to wait till May, and apparently you don't want to wait till, you know, we may have to wait till, till, you know, a few months to get, get these things going, but we're going to start right away. It's not like, we're just telling you when it's going to, how long it's going to take to do these things. When, when I talked to Brian Moore, the licensed site professional, he was talking months out, you know, back in February when we had the Zoom meeting with the town, you know, right away I contacted the attorney for the Abuddas and contacted Brian Moore, and he said maybe possibly by June, you know, you're talking six months from now. So, you know, these things take time. Now, of course, you have certainly, you know, I mean, we're hearing the feelings that you have, the negative feelings that you have about how long it's taken. I can't speak to that. I know one thing I can speak to is that Mr. Citos is a, is a, is a self-made, hard-working immigrant that came to this country, and he has good intentions despite maybe the implications that, you know, have been made here tonight. He has good intentions. And if he says he's going to do something, he does it. It just, with this, with this cleanup, it's the first time he's ever had that. As much, as much property as his son owns, I don't know if you had a 21E issue like this. I know I have it.
I mean, the.
I don't know whether anyone here has had to deal with the property that's had a 21E issue. It's, it's such a complicated, lengthy type, and expensive type of thing to get
And the market is changing now with the interest rates going up, so obviously, sales are going to slow down, so if he does want to sell it, it'll be a lot harder to sell. He has the means to develop it.
I like it.
And, and he wants to develop it, and I would actually do the work for him.
You know why? Because I spend a lot of money to fix it. I mean, fix them up. If I sell this, I have to pay seven more hundred taxes. I would like, I don't know, buy, if you buy another one, it's very hard for me to buy another one. Better to fix it and after give to him, you know what I mean? I gotta go back to this.
I think Mr. Citos is the, is the best person right now to clean up the place and get it, things done. He has the will of all to do it. He's shaking a head.
Sir, with, with all due respect, he's had seven years to do that and he's not done it. More than, more than seven years.
He has a clean 21E now.
Well, after seven years, how, how many of the other properties that you identified sat in the, in the deplorable condition that this one has for seven years?
It took him seven years. Obviously, he should have done it quicker.
How many other properties that he owns?
It's not his modus operandi to buy buildings and have them empty and decrepit. All his properties are rentable. They're all out there. They're rentable. He wants to rent. He doesn't make any money on this. He's losing money.
Losing taxes.
Accept the appreciation, of course.
Yeah, well, we know, we know what the taxes are based upon the condition of, of, of the building though, too, and so there, there's, I'm not even going to get into that argument, so don't try to suggest that, that somehow.
Does he owe any taxes?
Taxes, seventy thousand, taxes have been.
Okay, Counselor Tines, do you have a question?
I do. Actually, this is a request.
Yes, and then the fire department called me, say I want to send the bill. I want to send the bill. I said, well, I can't, the property is closed.
So if I may, I, you know, I, I think, you know, you're hearing frustration over the last seven years, and quite frankly, I'm not really interested in rehashing that because that doesn't help us in terms of thinking of a path forward. And so, to that end, I'd like to make a request that you come back to this body in six weeks. And in those six weeks, there are a few things that I personally would like, speaking just for me, not for the council as a whole, but there are some things that I'd like to see. One is a definitive plan for renovations, a plan and timeline for when you'll be able to renovate and make the retail spaces available for, for lease. A second is evidence that utilities are turned back on in the building and that you've been able to get approval from our police and fire and DPW departments for, you know, basically for people to go into the building and do the renovations. And third, evidence that you're prepared to pull a building permit to actually do those renovations. Are, are those things achievable in the next six weeks and for a report back to us?
Well, to pull the building permit, you would need a special permit. That would take a lot longer.
Well, so here's my question, and this is why, you know, I asked specifically about the bifurcation between the, the retail and the apartments. Quite frankly, I, you know, I know the apartments are a special permit, and so I'm less interested in the timeline for that. My question is, can you do the retail work sooner rather than later so we don't have to wait two years for the building to be at least presentable and productive as a neighborhood asset? And so my, my request is, in terms of a permit, I'm really asking about a permit specific to doing the renovations in the retail parts of the building to allow it to be occupied and rented out. Is that something that's achievable in the next six weeks?
We, we have to speak to the building department, and we have to see how they allow us to do it. So it's up to the building department to be honest with you.
So if I could ask again, in six weeks, if we can get an update on all of that? I mean, I, I want to believe that this is going to be something that can move forward in a productive way. I really do. As I said, I am not interested in rehashing the last seven years because nothing is going to change. But I'm taking the approach of sort of trusting but verifying here, and so I'm looking for verification that you guys can come back in six weeks and show us that there's been demonstrable progress to making the building habitable for at least the retail space, you know, at some point in the next six to 12 months. Is that?
Definitely.
Excuse me. What about the exit? You got to take it all.
So that's something that you've got to work out with the appropriate town departments. And that involves making sure that there's water service and electrical service to the building.
Correct.
And so what this is going to take, and if I, if I'm speaking out of turn, Mr. Mayo, please correct me. But what this is going to take is a commitment from, from you two as the property owners to make sure that the conditions that, you know, we've set forward in terms of, you know, taking the Xs off, that those conditions are met. And my understanding, Mr. Mayo, is those conditions are not in place today.
Correct.
So that's my request. I mean, again, you know, the building's not going to be available for retail tomorrow. We're not going to solve anything in this, in this setting. But I would like to get an update in six weeks with that.
Agreed. I think a path forward is, thank you. No, thank you, Counselor Chines. I think a path forward is great. I actually think rehashing those last seven years isn't helpful. What is helpful, you actually have an attorney who showed up. So for seven years, nobody else actually, we didn't have a conversation with someone. And so I think we're kind of asking for updates. And I think, you know, making a timeline, that's believable. And that you, you know, we, we partner together. The town wants, wants you to be successful. We've been waiting for seven years. We were actually really excited that the Boys and Girls Club would potentially move in there. So it's been seven years of not even hearing from you. So, so I, I really like kind of deliverables as an update in six weeks. But Steve, do you have anything to add?
Just, just a couple of things, if, if I might. There was a mention of a Zoom meeting with the town back earlier this year. And that was held, police, fire, DPW building for a couple of reasons. Number one is the sidewalks were not being shoveled in front of the building. You know, as you know, we have a bylaw. We want people to be able to walk on the sidewalks in the downtown. They weren't being shoveled. That actually was a secondary issue. A more important issue with us was that the building was not secured. There were people that were getting into the building, getting in the doorway, some people that are less fortunate, who were really concerned about any of them getting harmed or setting fire to the building. That is a tight area down there. You can see that spreading. So it was really about public safety and well-being. And the reason why it was boarded up is to prevent that. And those, those Xs that you see on the building are to protect our town personnel, that there are no people in the building, to protect them. And that's very important to us. So those will not come down. You kind of mentioned that until we're satisfied. I'm telling you right now. So I also heard that Andreas, you're handling it now?
Correct.
Okay? That's, thank you. That's excellent. I, I know that you have had passed in other communities, I think, with our building inspector. So he knows you.
Yes.
Ben knows you. So that should, that could be very helpful there. I also believe I mentioned to you before is that we, the town spent our own money kind of doing a marketing survey of what would work in that building. We did, we, we engaged the Urban Land Institute years ago to show what would work and, and what would work with the improvements we're doing downtown, the improvements we're doing on the rail to trail. And that actually brought people in, brought buyers in that were excited about that coming together. I don't know if you have it, Andreas, but we'll get it to you so you can see that. I'm also very concerned, and although I'm not a building inspector, I think there are many code issues in the building that are going to have to be addressed. There may be some zoning issues that we need to look at. And that would be through a special permit process. But I think I have had no more, no less than a dozen people come over to me over the years. Not all buyers, but many very excited tenants over the years looking to come in. And, and this was right when the previous restaurant left. Coming in, great location. I actually went out to a couple of them in other towns. They were, and they were so excited to see what their product was about. Great, great, very excited only to have the deal that they have shot down. So that's a, that's a, a common theme that I'm getting. There is a deal and then it goes away. And I hope Andreas, if you're taking over, then that, that stops.
It's different.
Because I hope it's different. So we're willing to work with you, but our patience is very thin.
Just, just to make a comment on what you said, Steve. The Zoom meeting was February 2nd. I don't know if you recall, but I recall. How long did it take Mr. Cidos, Cidos to get the snow shoveled?
I would say after that, he was, he was responsive to our police and fire at that time.
Within, within days, he had shoveled the snow and ordered up.
I, I will give him that.
At that Zoom meeting, I said, what do we have to do? And I was told those two things we had to do right away.
I frankly think that was your influence.
Yeah, well, maybe it was.
But it's also the, the snow should have been shoveled in already.
Yes.
Right.
So that you're not, you, like, by failing to follow, like, the requirements of our town and then after being, you know, told you have to do it, doing it, I, I don't, I don't see how that's like a much of a good faith gesture. A good faith gesture is to actually shovel without having to be told.
Well, I'm trying to make the point that he's responsive. And I think, you know, maybe it's me. You know, the fact is that I, I like Mr. Cidos. I think he's, he reminds me of my uncles who worked hard and built up businesses. And I think he trusts me. So I give him advice. When I heard from Steve and I heard from several of the heads of departments, how they felt, I got the sense of how they felt about Mr. Cidos. And so I said, you know, we got to start, we got to, we got to work with, with the town and respond to them right away. And I'm listening to you. And I think, I think, you know, you have valid feelings of, of being upset about the town. I would, I would feel the same way as you feel, to tell you the truth. I would want this thing. Why wasn't it done? But anyway, we're here, we want to go forward. The fact that Andreas is involved is a good thing. Mr. Cidos will listen to his son and hopefully me too. And hopefully we get things done. We can get you some answers. And, and I think someone's going to let me know when the, when the meeting is. And we'll try to be here, you know, again. This is the first time you've seen him in all these years.
In, in seven years, yes. So I, I, I give you credit as the attorney.
Thank you.
For doing that. So, you know, you, you heard from all of us. You've heard kind of our concerns. I think a path forward and an update in a couple of weeks. And our town clerk will get you the date now we have this communication. But, you know, I, I think the underlying is we want to look forward. We want, it's clean now. We want to see tenants in there. We want to see those Xs and electricity on. And we want to see it. We want it to be part of our community. But, you know, and you know how to contact our town administrator and all the, all the department heads to have those things happen again.
I, I do have a request. I know, Andreas, you said you know the building inspector, Ben Cristobal, okay? So if anyone here is, is able to discuss this meeting and, you know, our attitude and hopefully we can get, you know, we, we've reached out to people before. And we, we want guidance as to what they want him to do. So you'll, you'll follow up.
If you've got time, I got the plans here. If you want to see, I don't, it's up to you.
I, I think we would look forward to seeing that in about six weeks and to hear what else you've done. Yeah.
Okay.
All my counselors, good? With that? Okay. Thank, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Take care, everybody.
Tom, you didn't have anything to add, did you?
No.
Okay, great. Great. I am, I'm going to take chair prerogative and move on the agenda. We are going to go to item six presentations, Department of Public Works.
I was going to suggest.
I'm, I'm one step ahead of you, Steve, today.
You are, absolutely.
Hello, if you wouldn't mind, thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself. And I think you have the clicker to do the slides?
I believe I do. So thank you, everyone, for inviting us in. I am Joe Conway, Public Works Director. And with me is Ann Waite, our Business Manager. We're before you tonight just to come in, check in, give you an update of some things going on and go through a presentation, a couple of talking points and have a discussion. So the last time that Public Works was in here, I believe I was in here, sometime right around the first of the fiscal. And one of the things we talked about, we were talking about line painting specifically. But one of the things I said was that there's been a, a big initiative on our part to get all of our assets digital and to get them in a place where we could ultimately land them online so, so people could see them and interact with them. One of the things that we were able to do in an effort to be more transparent in some of the things that we have going on as far as projects through town, we created our GIS, our interactive project map. I apologize, I think the council might have seen this before, but for the people at home, basically what this is, is a interactive live tool that's housed online in the engineering sub-page of the town's website. And what this is, is a visual of a lot of the projects that we have going on through town. The way that it's set up is it's color-coded and phased into things that we are planning, things that we're designing, and then things that are under construction currently. You can literally scroll over the map and zoom into different neighborhoods through the colors and click onto different things. And some of the things that you get when you do that, a brief project presentation, our description of what's being done, a point of contact with the town, so whoever's managing the project from the Public Works staff, any plan sets that might be associated with the project, and then an anticipated schedule for deliverables. You can also use, if, if you're a little bit more old-school, I guess you could say, the list on the right will get you to the same place. Either way, all the links are live and it's something that you can scroll through and learn and kind of educate yourself on some of the things that are going on. This is something that has been a real priority over the last year to get up. That way people can see, read, and interact with us and kind of have a, a point to navigate the communication flow in between Public Works and the residents in town. So something that I don't think the council has seen to this point, we've actually also rolled out an interactive property map. So what this is, is really an assessing tool. Most of the information on this is related to assessments and property data. But really what this is, it's geographically referenced property data. But some of the things that we added into this were overlays. So you can actually pick your property, do some research on it as far as your assessment record. The old way that this used to happen, you literally had PDFs of CAD maps up there. And, you know, it was, it was scrolling through pictures and images. This is interactive. And I know you probably can't see it from where you're seated now, but on the right-hand side of the view, there's different layers you can turn on. And we made a, a point to include things like voting precinct, your trash day, what school district you might be in, some wetlands information, and then FEMA flood maps. These are all questions that people would come and interact with us at the windows. So we wanted to get this into a place where if you're looking up your property, you can kind of see some of the other things that are commonly associated with it. And you could do it at the convenience of your living room without having to come down to Town Hall. So I'd like to give credit, if I may, really quick while I'm sitting here. Our engineering staff and our GIS project manager, Katie, she's a Division of One. And she definitely has had a mountain of work put on her with all of these initiatives. And she's been plugging through it quite awesomely. And I think in the last slide, there's a quote in there that she said, this is every day, you know, we get a little bit closer to providing more of the data we have to the people out in the public. So as things continue, you will continue to see more of this and we'll continue layering up on it. But we're proud that the foundation of it's online and we hope that people can take a spin through it. If you have any questions, certainly reach out to us. But it'd be fantastic as things get updated. You'll see them get, get dropped in and you can learn a little bit about what's going on in town. So outside of this, the other topic that we had to talk about this evening with you, recycling. So we come in, talk about recycling periodically, some of the things related to it. You know, I feel like we always like to come in when we get some sort of a, a new grant or an idea and get a way to divert waste and things like that. It usually comes up around budget time. For the purpose of this conversation, I'm going to provide a little context before the next slide. But, so basically, in the state of Massachusetts, the DEP Solid Waste Master Plan, it's conducted every 10 years. And Massachusetts general law dictates the necessity for that to happen. So for the 2030 plan, the goal is to work towards zero waste in Massachusetts. So there's a benchmark tonnage that DEP calculates. And the goal is to reduce that tonnage by 30% by 2030 and 90% by 2050. In the 2010 to 2020 plan, that goal was also 30%. And come to find out, after, you know, that plan has been through, they found out that in reality, the actual reduction was approximately 16%. When they put out the 2030 plan, they got more aggressive and implemented some more aggressive change to get to that 30% drop. That is something that is going to be a trend that we'll probably see continue on in the future. Just something to be mindful. So in this 2030 plan, some of the top diversion, waste diversion, right? So getting the waste out of the incinerator and the landfill. And reduction priorities that I highlight is our food waste, which we're not going to cover tonight. It's mostly, we'll cover a little bit of it, but it's mostly on the commercial side to encourage restaurants to compost cardboard, untreated wood, and then we'll talk about textiles and mattresses. So how do we align in Wakefield with this solid waste master plan? So as you all are very aware, we started our pilot program with Black Earth Composting to create the residential curbside composting program. Currently, right now, we have 406 users through the grants, through the DEP. We've been able to provide 279 starter kits free of cost to interested residents. And we have 21 still available now. So if I can take two seconds to plug that, if anybody is interested and you contact us, we will certainly help get you set up.
How should they contact you?
Oh, sure. So they could call the Public Works office. You can speak to anybody there, or Ann, or myself specifically. And we will help guide you through the way if this is something you're interested in getting more information on. So to date, an interesting piece to this. So the total tonnage that we've diverted has been 201 tons. So, which has netted us about a $20,000 savings in the incineration bill for our weekly pickup. So, you know, $20,000 is a real tangible number. And, and that is something that could turn into, you know, a capital acquisition, some budgetary savings, you know, you name it. But, you know, the residents have been absolutely fantastic with the buy-in and our, our partner has been very good with us. And as you can see, you know, the, the finances are showing that the, the program seems to be working and likely something that we're going to be looking forward to try to expand in the future. Another way we align, when we were negotiating our last trash and recycling contract, you know, one of the major decisions that comes up every time is the, the cost benefit and the tonnage benefit to whether or not you sign up for weekly recycling or bi-weekly recycling. The financials of it, it made more sense to go to unlimited bi-weekly recycling because essentially you would have doubled the cost for you to pick up weekly. But one of the things we asked for in all the proposers was the ability for Public Works to create a drop-off and actually collect our own cardboard or commodity and bring it to the facility and in exchange for, you know, whatever the commodity is trading for at that time minus a small fee to bail it. So that was something that, that was put in. It was really originally put in for convenience with Amazon and, and things like that and things getting shipped to your house. Sometimes those boxes can be cumbersome. I could say that the participation at the Nahat Street Yardway site and the container we have there has been fantastic. Any resident has the ability to bring any cardboard there that's able to be recycled anytime we're open. In the year that we've been offering this, we've put 14.2 tons back to the recycling facility. And it's netted us, actually, we're, we're cash flow positive in this. We've actually netted $592 back, which isn't, you know, it's not blockbuster or anything like that. But this is a really zero-cost, you know, service for us to implement. And it really doesn't take honestly more than a half an hour to get the material to the facility and get our, our folks back in and back onto another task. I'd like to thank actually everybody that's taking part in this. One of the things with any of these drop-offs that you're always concerned with, contamination is huge in the recycling. If you're contaminated to a certain point, the whole thing just becomes trash. And then, you know, you end up taking something that you thought was going to be processed and commodityed out and it ends up going into a landfill or incinerator. We've had zero contamination with this. So the people that are bringing their stuff down there have absolutely, you know, followed the rules of the law. We have no issues with this whatsoever. It's really been fantastic and it seems that it's been very well received. Next up, so there are a couple of new changes. And I think the council is, is aware of this as well. With the 2030 plan, textiles and mattresses is another area that the DEP wanted to see get out of the waste stream and start to get recycled. So as of November 1st, 2022, mattresses and textiles are officially on Mass DEP's banned material list, which means that they cannot be at the incinerator. They cannot be at the Reese landfills. Mattresses and box springs now must be recycled. So even though textiles are no longer acceptable wastes, one thing to note here is there are actually still 13 drop-off locations in town that will take your textiles absolutely free. On this slide right here, that we included a list of them, most of them being planted aid. And then the school department has Bay State textiles on site, where believe it or not, they actually, I believe they still receive a small dividend for what they...
About $700 a month.
So they, they actually generate some income from, from people.
Make sure they account for that in their budget next year.
For school or the entire system?
The whole system.
$700 a month?
Yeah.
Yep. So that's the textiles. So since the DEP, this was originally supposed to happen last October. The MMA, the 351 communities in the Commonwealth all had some questions about the infrastructure in place to accept this. You know, you're going large scale, now everybody has to buy in. Are these companies and businesses scaled up to the point where they can handle the volume of basically every, every dwelling in the Commonwealth? So it was ultimately delayed up until this year. But it, it will not probably be delayed anymore. So we kind of are what we are. As soon as we knew that the DEP was solid and, you know, there wasn't going to be any more comment period, you know, they were, they had received everything. They've addressed the municipalities. They certainly addressed the MMA. And, you know, they were going to move forward. Public Works, I would say, give credit to Ann. She solicited basically anybody that was listed being able to, to accept this. And we started asking for proposals to see, you know, who could offer what and how does that affect Wakefield. We reached out to over six and we got two that came back that actually provided service and price proposals. Where we ended up landing was with a DEP-approved vendor called Hand Up Mattress Recycling. They're out of New Bedford. they're out of New Bedford, and they will be providing curbside pickup and recycling services for mattresses and box springs. There were some other avenues where you could bring different companies in that were set up to do event-style. The one problem with that is, you know, if you have some of your populace that isn't ambulatory or doesn't have the means to get their mattress to, say, the high school or wherever you're having an event, it kind of singled them out, so we really focused on needing to have a curbside. And then, as we get that rolling, you know, if we do events and things like that where we can offer some sort of savings to someone that does have the means to do that, we'll certainly do that. We want to make sure that our bases are covered completely throughout the town. So moving forward, you will definitely see more information on this in the coming weeks. We've been working with Jen McDonald pretty closely on getting press releases out for digital and in print. What will end up happening is a link and a phone number will be put up on the town's website with more information on this. They'll probably have its own sub-page kind of explaining it, because there's a lot of information related to this topic. Schedule and payment, as we move forward, will be conducted between the resident and Hands Up. So if I was to schedule, I would, you know, interact with the website, say I live at 123 Main Street, pay the fee for the mattress, and then I would be put on their list. And what this will follow is, this will look similar to the way we collect white goods right now. So there'll be one day to be determined at the end of each month where they come up and they will take mattresses from Wakefield. The "to be determined" part, it's rolling out in November, you have, you know, Veterans' Day holiday, and the Thanksgiving holiday chops up the end of the month a little bit. So we have to, you know, land on a date that's going to work and be convenient for people at this point. We should probably have that locked down by Monday, I would say. Unfortunately, the bad part to this is, so now mattresses are collected, or box springs are collected, as a $20 bulk fee. That fee, because of the recycling entity and needing to actually, you know, perform a lot of this by hand, is going to go up to $60 per item right now. We do believe pretty strongly that we have some future opportunities to leverage grants and some other different avenues, especially with our location, to hopefully deliver some savings back. But we're at the infancy stage of this right now. So, be rest assured that any opportunity to turn over stone and look for any grant money to pass on back to the residents is definitely going to be done, whether it's Sustainable Recovery, RDP, you name it, there won't be something that we won't do. And then, obviously, in the future, we'll probably end up running some sort of an event to be able to at least get those who are able to some sort of cost savings there. So with all of that good news, I included just some links for the stuff that I talked about earlier, but I'm sure there's some questions about the fully-loaded presentation here, so we'd be more than happy to engage in some conversation.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. Anne, did you have anything to add, or you're just?
Well, I was just going to say that the night that Cravings was on a Chronicle, they talked about Hands Up, and they did a, it began the program. So that was, it was very interesting, so that's interesting. And I just wanted to add that they are a for-profit organization, but they give about 80% to local community nonprofits. And last I was going to say is that most of these companies are new to the business, that they haven't been doing that long, and so we'll be working with them to try to get the kinks out and things like that. Three of the companies only started after January 1st of this year. So they're learning as we go, so we hope to learn with them.
That's great. I'm going to take chair prerogative and ask some questions first, and then, Councilor DeBroski, I'll go to you after my eye goes that way first. This was so great. I, first of all, I want to say, I love that you come out for us and don't mention the dreaded four-letter word of snow. So, this is great to hear about everything else, so I'll leave that for Councilor Chimes. I absolutely adore that interactive map, and I really hope you work with Jen McDonald to really hype it up so that we actually get hits, and I'd love a report later of how many people actually use it, because I just think that's amazing. And kudos to Katie on your team, because, you know, I look at voting precincts change and school districts change, and to keep all that updated is very impressive. So I want people to know about this map, so that was one thing. And then the next slide, and each thing, I had something to say. Next one, next one, because that was what I was talking about. The recycling and composting statistics just make me so happy. I think our town is so excited, and I think it's, you know, it's what, we're being asked about sustainability and what we're doing on recycling. And I know, I do want to say, as you think about events to have and partnerships with Environmental Sustainability Group, other groups in town, Anne and I had a great, she almost can, I think I might hit you up on one of those composting starter kits. But I, but I do think, you know, residents in our town are really appreciative of all of this stuff, so I love you finding ways of residents to be able to participate, and it's a cost savings to us. And so it's actually doing the right thing and saving money and getting credit, like on our triple bond rating for doing right stuff, so.
I'll tell you, the beautiful thing about, you know, piloting the composting, that was 100% a resident idea. You know, Rob Darnell came in and talked to me about it, and did his homework, provided an example, and it was very easy to kind of dip our toe in the water and see what was going to happen. You know, we're kind of fortunate that we've been through it. I'm sure that at some point in time, you know, maybe Solid Waste Master Plan 2040, there'll be a residential component to this that they'll ask the communities to do, but, you know, we've kind of seen what works, what we needed to alter, so we're sitting in a good spot.
Yeah, I think it's super exciting, and I actually emailed the Environmental Sustainability Group because the pumping pumpkin composting that happens every year at the elementary schools is November 9th. I asked them what it was. It's a really fun activity where everyone who has a pumpkin, mostly kids, but myself included, can take your jack-o'-lantern and your pumpkin and put it in a big truck, and we, it's like tens of thousands of tons that we save in the town, and so we will hype up that event also. Can I ask you about the cardboard recycling?
Absolutely.
Is that for anyone in town to go take cardboard there?
Anyone.
If someone is not familiar with the pit, I could probably just ask Ed, but I'm asking you.
Anybody that comes in, so long as the cardboard is clean and acceptable, it would be foolish on our part to turn them away.
So you don't need a pit pass?
Nope.
So your desire is to have people bring their cardboard boxes there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want it to be mistaken, certainly, we don't have the infrastructure to be in the cardboard recycling business, but if any of the residents in town have it, no matter where you live, so long as it's of a quality that is recyclable, we will certainly take it. You know, for us, it's not a heavy lift, it provides a little bit, you know, of a monetary value, but it's really just an extra convenience that we can offer that, you know, there's not really a heck of a lot of sweat involved in it. So anybody that has it, so long as the gates are open and the facility's staffed, the one the merrier.
And just to reiterate what Councilor Smith-Gowen said, you don't need a pit pass, so it's anyone can drive up-
Yep.
-or bike up-
Anybody.
-or walk up and give the cardboard. A backpack, Julie could do it.
However you can get it, we'll take it.
And then, I think just the last question kind of goes about that, as we think about recycling, I have two more comments, as we think about recycling composting, I really like the idea of thinking of not just household owners, right? So people in condos, people in apartments, and how we're making it easy for them and not thinking just of the single-family home. So we have a lot of apartment buildings, I live in a condo, I have my own recycling and garbage. I was talking to Anne about how I get my condo to do composting, right? Like, how could we get a big basket? So I think the more that you think about that too, because that's who's coming part of our town, I just really want to think about that. And then the other thing, just to think about and working with Steve about this, is I understand when the mattress, I understand that we have to do it, $60 price tag is big, and so, you know, thinking about town-wide event days, and also, as always, if anyone has trouble with the fees, to reach out to Steve and our emergency fund, because that's what it's there for. We don't, you know, we know it's a barrier, and so just to think about that, like, town-wide days are great, and then we can kind of, you know, share the cost. And then I will be quiet, and Councilor DeBroski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe and Anne, thank you for this. It's a great presentation, you do incredible work in your department, and I think you know that.
Thank you.
One thing on the Mattress and Box Springs, one of the concerns that I have about this, and I'm thinking especially about, I'll call them the ladder streets, literally the ladder rungs between Main Street and North Ave, a lot, there's a lot of density there and a lot of apartments, and I know historically there have been a lot of box springs and mattresses. So the thought, I know it's 60 per piece, so it's, I mean, candidly, $60 to recycle a box spring is more than like a lot of box springs cost, you know? So I'm just thinking from the perspective of those that may not be compliant but instead are putting this, you know, these out, which is already an issue, as we've talked about before. How can we mitigate it on the town side of things? Because if we can't trace that to, say, a unit or a residence even for that matter, I'm just concerned about how, you know, the town absorbing these kinds of costs going forward, you know? I just put it on your radar as something to think about, you know, not asking for like a direct question, you know, a direct answer now on that, but it's just one thing that, in hearing it and thinking about some more, it's one thing if it's like, you know, 20 bucks, and ultimately, I don't think it ultimately would necessarily cost us 20 bucks as a town to necessarily get disposed of those things. But now, if we're talking about, yeah, we have to recycle these, there's a real tangible price to that, that likely would not be borne by someone who may just leave it in a street, you know, or between residences or something.
Yeah, it's the comment that I could offer on that currently, so we actually are lucky enough, we have a full-time, you know, refuse and recycling coordinator, who I know exactly the reference that you're speaking of-
Right.
-and he is very on top of it, very aware. He's out at 5:30 in the morning and likes to get to the root of whatever the issue might be, so he's certainly up to speed and understands, you know, what may or may not be some of the challenges related to this. So to be proactive on that end, and then the education piece too. And then, you know, ultimately, the cleanliness of the town is something that, you know, we really become stewards of, so, you know, in the event that you do get something misfortunate, you know, we're equipped to handle it and then investigate it and figure out whatever they're correct, but.
I guess one of my biggest concerns, because I know, Joe, we've talked about this a lot, and you've done such a good job with your team of, you know, improving the situation with that, but oftentimes, there will be, say, like a vacant lot or a parking lot with a tree, and there's a mattress or box spring leaning against it, and there's no way of really tracing that back. And it's not like you can rifle through the trash in the same way to get an address or, you know, something, oftentimes, what we've done in the past with some of our downtown trashcans, for instance, it's harder, you know, with, without, you know, I guess, DNA testing on it, I don't know, I didn't even know how you do it, but without that, it's hard to understand exactly who it is. So I just think that that's something that we should all be mindful of, because I can see that as being a potential cost consideration for us going forward, and I don't want to see DPW's budget compromise as a result. And I guess, since you're here, if it's all right with the Chair, I am DPW liaison, so they've really stolen all my thunder from the liaison updates. But I do just want to recognize that, a couple of things. One, you know, I have worked closely with this department for a long time, and the commitment of this entire team is second to none. Every event, and I think about Town Day, for instance, just this past weekend, DPW is such a crucial part of making that happen, and I know you guys are so often behind the scenes, that you're not front and center, you know, and you certainly police, you are a big part of that as well, but DPW is right there with them. And, you know, you guys are setting up, you're breaking down, you're making sure things are going as planned, you're making sure anything and everything we need for all these events to happen, and we see that all the time. You know, we see it at a town meeting, you know, we see it at an event at the mayor account, and so you really are the unsung heroes so often, you know, but you are the glue that keeps so many of our events going forward, but it's easy to just get accustomed to you doing good work. But I think it's important that we recognize that. And also say, you know, the GIS, having worked with Joe, you, Bill Renaud, Town Engineer and the team, on the roads projects, you know, going through 88 miles of road and scanning that, you know, this is just more of the same, I feel like, in a really good way. It's the kind of technology we need, it's the kind of interactivity that our residents are looking for, and it's far more efficient than we've had in the past, so, you know, I just credit you and your team and continue to innovate like this, because this is how local government works best, you know, when you're looking at ways to streamline, you know, rather than going through PDFs and trying to piece things together, you know? Interactive is good, but I can just, my report to my colleagues is just that, you know, DPW is a well-oiled machine that is incredibly committed to what they're doing every day, and, you know, I'm incredibly proud of the work that you do, and I feel fortunate to be the liaison to be able to report all this good stuff.
So thank you, thank you very much.
I didn't even think of inviting my committees to have them do my please.
That was not pre-planned, I can promise you.
No, that was, that was great. Councilor Chimes.
Thank you. So, first of all, I just want to echo both the thanks in general for the work that you do, but I am so excited about the project dashboard, and I will tell you, I've already used it multiple times and probably saved several emails to Mr. Renaud, so I'm sure he appreciates that as well. But it is a tremendous resource, and I really, you know, I hear a lot of questions from people about, you know, what's the story with this road, when is this project moving forward, and so I just really encourage people to use the resource. The information is fantastic, and I'm thrilled that it's in one place. My ask is, obviously, let's make sure we keep it updated. I mean, it's great to have the information out there, but-
Absolutely.
-you know, let's make sure we keep it up to date, and, you know, we keep the information fresh.
Yeah, there's a couple of the things, so the historical commission was in talking about the ban stance last week, so as that rolls on, that will be included in this-
Great.
-so to keep people up to speed. It's a little tough with some of the day-to-day things, you know, the 24, 48-hour projects that you kind of in and out, but more of the programmatic things will definitely all be included in that.
Yeah, and I think that's fine, I don't think, I mean, I certainly don't have the expectation, I don't think the public has the expectation that, you know, you're filling a pothole in a day and a half that that's going to go on it.
Yeah, no, it's certainly not set it, forget it. It's alive, living and breathing.
Yep. Obviously, you know, if people are looking for that kind of information, making sure you've got the contact information for the DPW so they can report that kind of stuff is important, but, you know, I, my experience just in, you know, even kind of recent requests that I've made, as I've heard about, you know, drainage issues and pothole issues, you guys are great about taking care of that. So our Chair brought up the dreaded four-letter word, so one of the questions I did want to ask was about preparing for the winter. I know last year, we had some challenges, particularly with availability of contractors. I know we didn't have materials challenges, but, you know, supply chain shortages and issues are a big issue that, you know, we're hearing about in other areas. Can you give us a sense as to what your outlook is for the winter, just in terms of, you know, our ability to get prepared and get contractors in place to do plowing and so forth?
So every year, annually, sometimes towards the mid to end of September, we will solicit all the contractors that worked for us last year, plus, you know, a list of, basically anybody that was doing work in town, to see if they might want to join us for the winter. You know, last year, we probably could have, it could have helped to have maybe about five more pieces. I can tell you, internally, our staff, we're ready to go.
Yep.
We know whatever Mother Nature throws at us, you know, we know when it's time to come in to work, you're obviously using, you get the job done. You know, I'm an optimist, so I'm going to say that I feel like, through the conversations that our staff has had with some of those vendors, we feel like the good majority of them are coming back. Obviously, we're always looking to solicit some more if we can, but, you know, I think we're in good shape. The price of salt is up a little bit from last year, but it's not so dramatic where, you know, after a storm or two, we're going to be talking to Steve and having a seat about some other dreaded words, but it should be, we think we're in a comfortable position, and, you know, hopefully, if we get anything, it's quick, and, you know, it's not too disruptive, everybody's safe, and we can start thinking spring.
Yeah, good. Just a second question, just if I may, so, you know, a couple of months ago, when you and Bill were here, we had some discussions around crosswalks, and my recollection at the time was that there was an effort to kind of do sort of an annual refresh of all the crosswalks in town, and it feels like there are definitely some that got done, but a number, at least that I see in my day-to-day that didn't, and so could you talk a little bit about just the process around kind of restriping in crosswalks and just making sure that everything's kind of freshly marked, obviously, not at this point with winter coming, but, you know, as we look ahead to the spring?
So springtime, annually, every crosswalk in town should be hit, at least with the white bars. One of the things we mentioned, we actually had, I think it was seven different designs-
Yep.
-which is something, in the next probably two months, probably just before Thanksgiving, depending on when the meetings are, we'll be back with some of that information, as well as some construction standard updates for the council to review. But the goal is, absolutely every crosswalk gets done, every center line gets done, every fog line gets done. The center lines and fog lines, traditionally, because of the infrastructure you need to perform that, is all farmed out. This year, we actually took a lot of it on in-house and did a lot of it with our own crews, and I think for the first time in the last three years, the line item for line painting this year will not be in a deficit. So if there is anything that you think, you know, maybe the paint faded because of the temperature at night or something like that, please just let us know.
Okay.
It's a quick and easy refresh, but between, you know, once the winter breaks and the salt and sand and everything is swept up off the roads, between probably like the middle of April, and certainly like June 15th, you know, we want everything painted and looking good for the Fourth of July, Memorial Day, and those things, so.
Great, and so people can call the DPW if, you know, they see something in their area-
Absolutely, absolutely. You never know, I mean, you know, a car could have been parked on it and smudged it off or something like that, but yeah.
All right, terrific. Well, thank you very much again for all the great work that you do.
You're welcome.
Councilor Smith-Gowen?
Perfect segue. I had questions about the crosswalks too, so thank you very much.
I had questions about the crosswalks too, so thank you very much for that. And I'll be giving my report from the Traffic Advisory Committee, but they spoke very highly of working with the DPW on a lot of, you know, the painting, the safety, the safety-type aspects. So, thank you for doing that. I know, you know, there'll be probably continuing talks of maybe lines near curbs, or, you know, using paint, so people aren't backing up into crosswalks, and, you know, hopefully we can continue to work on that. But kind of going through, I just had a couple of questions on the things that you presented tonight. I just want to be clear, so the pink bags, the textile bags are gone?
You can still, you can still call and schedule. And it shows you a calendar when you go online.
Okay.
It'll tell you what days they're available in Wakefield. They no longer just automatically pick up in front of your house.
Right. And I was on MMA call today, where a couple of towns were talking about that, where they just discontinued it because of gas. But you can still call, and you don't have to have a pink bag, right?
Nope, you can put it out there.
They'll just call and they'll pick it up.
Yeah, anything.
Okay, so people who can't make it to one of those 13 locations?
Absolutely.
They can still take that?
And they can take a call too, you don't have to go online, you can call and talk to them.
Perfect. I can't wait to play with the new map.
I just found it.
And I'll probably be shooting you lots of ideas for things that can go on it, but maybe we can get bike racks on it and crosswalks on it.
That's something in the second map that I showed. Certainly, if we work with, I believe it's all housing, the Board of Health, but some of the mass emotion stuff that we had, we could certainly get those locations and things like that.
Yeah, I know, and I do, there's probably other maps, maybe, you know, trails and things like that as well. The Environmental Sustainability Committee is working on some trail things around open spaces. And just following on what Jonathan said, I definitely think keeping it updated is important. I don't know whether there's a way to kind of just add a last updated on each of the profiles, and maybe it doesn't have to be something you remember to do, but it can just be when somebody goes in and changes it. I was just reading the Greenwood Oak Green Street intersection, which I know we've been actively working on, but, you know, it's kind of interesting when you look at the schedule to know, yeah, the community meeting happened in February, you know, the last updated. So, that might be something to think about. And I think it's so great, all the recycling, all the composting, but just to be clear, like, I think our composting is still under 5%. Like, if you're looking at 406 out of, what, 9,000 households, more or less?
Yeah, I think that, I'm shooting from the hip, but I think there's 8200 dwellings.
So, maybe it's a little higher.
Yeah, you're right in the wheelhouse, though.
But, and that's not a bad thing. I mean, that's 5, 6% better than we were, you know, a year or two ago, but I think, you know, there's, and I have to tell you, I look out my window on Tuesday trash days, and almost all my neighbors have trash like overflowing, like, you can't put the lid down. So, I don't know, I don't know what to do about things like that. Is it education? I mean, I'm really glad you have a full-time person kind of going around and making sure that recycling is not ending up in the trash, but I still feel like as a community, we have a pretty long way to go to get down to, to get down to that zero by 2050. Every, every community does. It's not just ours. So, I don't really have anything. And the MMA call today, they did talk about some upcoming legislation, including probably some legislation around flushable wipes, and actually, the determination was there's no such thing as a flushable wipe. So, like, try to keep that, that's more of a sewer system issue than a trash issue, but, you know, maybe there'll be plastic bottle things and whatnot. So, I then finally, actually, two things. One is I know that Steve mentioned at one point that there's a sign inventory happening, is that the DPW?
Yes.
Where are we on that?
We are probably, so that is actually a task where someone takes a tablet out and inventories everything in place.
And I imagine it's a big job.
Yep. Drops a pin on it, assesses the condition of it, and essentially by hand is creating a base map or an asset inventory. I'd say we're probably about a quarter of the way through.
Okay.
We just are in the process of getting some of the folks in the Highway Division trained up on it, so we can kind of, you know, give that a little bit of a boost. And then that'll be something, you know, like everything, we want to figure out, what do we have out there for assets?
Yeah.
And, you know, catalog it, that way we know what our inventory is and...
Okay, just for clarity, are we talking street signs, like traffic, like...
Anything within the right-of-way.
Okay.
So, street sign, regulatory, traffic.
We still have like an old Cosmos Club sign, coming from Melrose and agreement. I don't think the Cosmos Club is probably...
They'll even grab those, so, you know, even the old, you name it. If it's out there, we want to know, so...
And also, because I, I mean, I do feel like, oh, there used to be a no parking sign that close to the curb, and now it's not there anymore. Like, there used to be a no right on red, and I just never know whether they fell down or they were taken down, or maybe it was, you know, on purpose.
Yeah, it's a whole, it's one cog in the whole traffic advisory discussion that'll happen with, you know, expanding conversation on traffic ordinances and kind of rhyme and reason for why, what exists where and how it got there. And then, obviously, the historical backup for us to, you know, if we show up and something's missing, and alls we see is, you know, a post, you know, what was this? We can go back and refer to it, and we always have it.
Right, right. So, I do, I am very much in favor of that. I think, you know, we can get rid of some old things that are just mucking up, you know, and it's probably higher value things, and then just maintaining. So, my final question, and you didn't touch upon it today, and maybe it's a discussion for another time, but trees, I'm going to talk trees here for a second. Because on the MMA call today, Senator Cream presented a proposal that she's going to put for the next legislative session, but there was a lot of talk about shade trees in the right-of-way. And I am, I mean, right-of-way is really anywhere kind of between the sidewalk and the road, right?
Correct.
So, and so I read the legislation today. My understanding is that any shade tree that gets taken down has to have a public hearing, and I'm not sure that's happening in Wakefield. Do you know anything about that?
If it's something that the tree warden, the tree warden has the authority, based on their professional judgment, to do that. I know that Dennis Fazio will have a tree, if a private citizen's looking to take down a tree, he always has a hearing for that.
Okay. I guess, I guess I would ask that we...
That looks true.
Look, let's just look at it. I just, and I want to understand, and even if, even if it's not sure, like, I want to talk about how we're taking down trees, how many trees, how we're reporting on trees, how trees are getting replaced. I, I really think that shade tree, and I'm not talking about like, you know, trees being taken down for construction or for the school, I think, these are shade trees. So, these are trees on public ways.
So, an interesting, you and I should connect outside of this meeting, but I actually just filed a pre-grant application for kind of an expansive study, so of an inventory of what we have existing, but then also to have somebody come in and help us with putting a plan together and identify places where we can actually get more street trees onto the street, whether they're utility-friendly, with the above or the underground, and then using that to kind of take some of the heat mapping that you see in other communities and really drop that.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, we're successful, and I'm coming back to you to ask to fully fund the match for the grant, but we could, we could certainly get way more into details on that. I could send you what I have.
And I did, I really do, Madam Chair, want to have a pretty comprehensive conversation on this and understand, you know, understand the law, and maybe it's not even just the law, the process. Like, what do we as a community want to see? I was in Cambridge yesterday, and there's an area where a tree had clearly been taken down, and there was one of those little, you know, things on the sidewalk that says, the new tree's going here in two months. So, you knew what was coming down. When I run in Melrose, there's, before a tree comes down, there's a sign on the tree that says, this tree is coming down next week. We're doing none of that. People are coming home, and I've had it happen to me right in front of my house. We come home to old growth trees being gone, and I don't doubt that Dennis has good, you know, that he has a, he has a handle on it, but I think it's really important from comfort, from climate, from, you know, shade, that we understand the whole process from this. So, that's all I could ask.
Yeah, I think, I think this council has been really invested in trees, so I think that we will add that to a future agenda. Thank you, Counselor, for bringing that up.
That's all I have. Thank you so much. I know I threw a lot at you.
And what I heard was you're going to ask us for money, and that just means we're just going to tell people to bring their cardboard boxes to the pit, so we can self-fund all of this.
I have to impress them with a grant application first.
Or to do composting. So many ways for us to save money and then give back, so we can kind of keep on doing this. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Vincent?
I just had a quick comment and a question. The roads and sidewalks in my area are being redone now, and I find that your staff and the contractors are extremely respectful. And unlike my esteemed colleagues, people still don't know who I am, so they're not being nice because I'm on Town Council, because they're very nice to my wife and our other neighbors have commented as well. I also appreciate the fact that I get sufficient notification. A gentleman from Public Works came to the house recently with a letter indicating when the work was going to be done. Not withstanding that, sometimes I do hear from other folks in other areas of town that they don't think they got sufficient notification. Can you kind of walk us through briefly the notification you do when you're going to go to a particular street and work on the roads and the sidewalks?
So, typically, anything, we will always, will never abandon that, what I would call the old-school approach, which is the, either the knock and conversation, or, you know, a letter, or an informational flyer in the mailbox. Obviously, the level of transparency, we wanted to increase, so we came up with, you know, other means to be able to do that. Typically, when you have a neighborhood, you'd have a neighborhood meeting where you'd engage, get some ideas, you know, at the onset and the planning stage, and then from there, once we get an idea, you'll get an initial notification, you know. The contractors provide us their schedules, so they give us kind of a, say, 60-day window. We'll try to update that to the neighborhoods. It's usually delivered via direct notification into your mailbox. Then from there, once we have, you know, it pretty concrete, you know, there'll be an update to that, delivered in the same way. We've talked about potentially using something, you know, pretty similar to like your reverse 911s to notify and things like that. The only hesitation with that is for a system like that, there is a cost component to it. And then there's also a little bit of the complex of the Boy Who Cried Wolf. If you're hearing from us talking about a paving project all the time, you may, you know, unintentionally miss something more important coming down the road because you're using it too frequently. So, the majority, the majority of it is boots on the ground, going from door to door, you know, with something in the mailbox, or trying to engage the neighborhood into kind of a site meeting on-site to talk about that.
Thank you.
Counselor Denny?
Yeah, so I have a question. The sign inventory, so what do you do when you gather the data? Then you, like, what makes you determine whether a sign needs to be replaced, or...
There's a whole bunch of different things. So, whether or not it's compliant with the latest edition of MUTCD, which is basically the governing principle for that, reflectivity, you know, different sign heights, you might, you know, be in a neighborhood that's, you know, a little bit off the beaten path in a cul-de-sac, and might find that it's too low, someone on a bicycle, you know, might be getting pretty close to it, things like that. But it basically becomes the record of our asset, so that, you know, if a tree falls down, or, you know, a snowplow catches it, or whatever might interact with the street sign happens and it disappears, we could go back to it and at least find out what we can put back in kind.
Okay, okay. And then, so, so signs that are like worn and things, those will be replaced?
Correct.
Okay. I had a question about the trees, is do, when we take away a tree, do we, do we replace it? Is there, or depends?
Rule of thumb is always to be, if one comes down, two goes up. So, if it can't be in the exact area, it'll be in the general area of wherever the tree comes down.
Okay. So, and does the homeowner have to do that if it's on their, on their, like, not their property? I guess it's their property.
No, in the event you go to petition and you have a hearing of a homeowner requesting to take down a public shade tree, they would provide a donation to replace it.
Okay.
In that instance, if it's something, you know, if it's a safety issue or something like that, that's something that would be absorbed through the Forestry Department.
Okay, okay. And utility poles, so, I have a whole thing on utility poles, but I live in Greenwood, and there's a lot of utility poles that look like they're falling over, and, you know, what can we do to aesthetically make those look better, other than putting them out underground, which is my, what I'd like to do? But shy of that, what can we do to make them look better?
So, not completely our area of expertise. I would probably default to MLD on that. I would say, though, that they're very aggressive with planting appropriate trees on the wire side of the streets that won't grow into their utilities. So, through their efforts there, you should see some buffering, but I would, I would say that if you have anything that looks like it might be a potential safety concern, that a phone call will probably get you the fastest result there.
Yeah, and I appreciate the flowers in Greenwood and the beautification, so, thank you.
I, I, I do want to add one thing that I hope is part of the sign inventory. I understand replacing makes sure they're right height. I talked to Town Minister Dr. Mayo about this years ago. We also have a lot of signs.
Agreed.
And so, there are signs, so for instance, a street that has merchant parking, each spot doesn't need its own sign.
Line painting was the same exact way.
Yeah.
You have Murray Street, I use this example all the time internally, behind St. Joseph's Church.
Yeah.
We don't need 10 arrows saying you can only go one way here, you know what I mean? So, right.
So, my, my hope is with the sign inventory, we actually decrease the number of signs.
Good point.
Increase the number of speed.
Yeah.
That, that is traffic advisory, but I think there is a lot of redundancy, and I want to follow whatever the laws, the laws are, but I think, you know, one sign per, per merchant parking spot is not necessary, right? You don't need 10 no-left sign turns.
No, I think, you know, the, establish the baseline, right? And then from there, you can answer the, okay, what is appropriate, or why do we have on certain stretch of street, why is this sign the way it is? So, you know, to develop that consistency, so here's the rhyme and the reason for why we do this, and we're going to apply it as a standard across everything. So, there's some uniformity, and you're right, it can get cluttered with, you know, aluminum, and it, they can look pretty ugly from time to time.
Yeah, so, so I think just my, my request would be, you know, less signs, still doing what we need to do, but less, less signs might be a better luck. Less signs, more trees, maybe that's kind of our motto for today. Counselor DeProwsky?
On the point about the poles in Greenwood, I know Counselor Denny had raised that, and you said you were, they were tipping, but in full disclosure, that was after you had been to the Beer Garden at the town. So, I think people should have just put it in context. As far as trees, I was actually in touch with Mr. Fazio today about that, and I'm regularly in contact with him about ways that, you know, he does inventory, but ways that we can do more relative to that. I know we have another planting coming up soon, and so I'm regularly in contact with him on that piece, because I agree. I mean, and anyone who wants to donate can certainly do it through the community program too.
Absolutely.
And we've had some good success with that, with people making financial donations in addition to obviously the funding, and I think that this is a budgeting priority going forward. I also did just want to do a PSA for November 5th and November 19th, which are our two curbside yard waste pickup days coming up. Those are always a big success, exciting. Those are Saturday mornings, don't forget, so make sure that you put them out, pickup begins around 7:00 AM.
Yes.
On Saturday mornings, so try to get those out on Friday night if you can. Great opportunity, though, to be able to, you know, have a lot of the yard waste picked up, and great exercise for people around town, too. So, and the pit will not be operating on those days because of safety issues with people coming, with the trucks coming in and out.
It's very congested, but I believe both days.
Both Sundays.
Both Sundays, it is open the day after.
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. And then finally, just with, with the cardboard, if you could just make sure that you flatten all of the cardboard, too. It's really important to do that. It just makes it a lot easier for everybody.
Also, easier to ride it on a bad path, like Julie, she does it. Steve, did you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things. I want to congratulate Joe and Ian and their whole staff. They're really way ahead of other communities on the mattress issue. I mean, way ahead. And that's, I think that's going to hopefully prove very well for us, because I am worried about dumping not so much on our citizens, but from other towns, and we'll be looking at, you know, other areas where, maybe on the outskirts, that people will be doing that. We have that issue now. Wanted to thank Jen, did a great job working with your staff and Pam in the engineering department on the project map. And the project map is if you aren't really good about clicking on the street, finding the street on the map, you can also put in the street's name. So for some, that's a little bit easier for them, putting in your street name, then you can see, you know, it's going to be paved, you know, spring of 2024, what have you, what it's scheduled for. So some people may have a problem, you know, with the map, didn't want them to call, it doesn't work. Well, there's this other way, this is a bit easier for you, too. So, great job, and it's, it's a new phenomenon, and we're excited about it, and we'll be working out the kinks. So, great job by your staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think echoing what everyone said, thank you so much, and this was, this was great, and know how appreciative we are of you, and we will, we will match those grants as you get them.
All right.
Because we know you do a great job doing it.
Challenge accepted.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, back to our regularly scheduled agenda. Item five, licenses. Item 5A, change of manager, OES?
OES.
OES Incorporated, DBA, fence located at 963 Main Street.
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so in our files is a query request form, which is a criminal offender record information form, and it shows the application that was made on August 12th. What I didn't see in our package is anything showing the results of that. Do we wait for those results to come in before we grant this?
All of these, all of these are subject to those forms and fingerprinting at the police department. So if anything shows up, no, they will not be issued. But I don't know if that's come back yet. Maybe Sherry can tell us.
Yeah, Ryan and Brian, we can't see Sherry on our screens.
I had the same question for the next one, too.
Yeah, it's the same answer.
Perfect. Can you see me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Hi. Okay, so the query, those are actual ABCC forms, so once you guys do your vote, I have to upload it to the ABCC portal, and they do what they need to do with their paperwork. As far as our bylaw is concerned, we have the fingerprinting one, and they have not been fingerprinted yet, and they, I won't be issuing anything until the police department does sign off on that.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that query, that query form is an ABCC form.
Because sometimes when we see these, it has a litany of all the town departments that have approved it, including police and whatnot, and I didn't see it here, and that's what led me to look into it a bit more.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye, six zero. Item 5B, change of manager, Knights of Columbus located at 570 North Avenue.
So moved.
Second. Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, six zero. Item 5C, a request for a one-day liquor license for Tanta Quinn, chapter number 100 OES for an event at the Wakefield Masonic Building at 370 Salem Street on October 23rd, from 1 until 4.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, six zero. Item 5D, a common.
Victular.
Victular license for Family Pizza Dough LLC located at 927 Main Street.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question, Madam Clerk. I'm assuming the application for this one is in order, there wasn't anything in the packet?
Right, yeah, so that one is still working through, its way through the portal, but yeah, it should be okay. Yep, they're taking over Lisa's Pizzeria.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Aye, six zero.
And Lisa's Pizza's going to Greenwood.
Yes.
They are leaving, they are leaving town.
I think it's already.
They're going to Greenwood Plaza.
Fire, but there's already a sign up.
Yeah.
Is it open? Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Item 5E, we need to set a public hearing date of October 24th, 2022, at 7:03 for transfer of license for MP Ventures LLC, DBA, Chow Amici located at 19th Center Street.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero, thank you. We will now go to item 7B, town council liaisons, updates. I'm just going to start with Counselor Vincent.
Oh, okay. So I have the privilege of being a liaison to four different departments, boards, and commissions. I'll start with the fire department. I meet every three months with the fire chief and his staff. I communicate with the fire chief a bit more frequently than that. He sends me his monthly reports. I go through the monthly reports, and then we converse about them. I can tell you that since I started doing this in May, every single month, they're doing, they're averaging 350 to 360 emergency incidents monthly across the board, and that's with 55 members in their department. What I will point out for September that's significant is all of them went through their medical classes as part of their emergency medical technician certificates. All of our vehicles were inspected and received registered motor vehicles inspection stickers. Fire drills were conducted at all public and private elementary and secondary schools, and there's a new standard operating procedure for reducing cancer risk from contaminated protective gear and equipment. The next one I'm a liaison to is the bylaws review committee. Bylaw review committee has 10 members. They've had five meetings since June 27th. As you know, we set up a pursuant to the charter, a bylaw review committee every year that ends in a 2 and a 7. It's getting more and more robust now. We're meeting twice monthly, going through the early parts of the town bylaws. So Division 1 bylaws, Part 1, is a lot of administrative, general provisions, appropriations, committees, commissions, and boards, departments, town meeting, going through that part of the bylaws right now. I'll defer to Mr. Mullin just for a moment, because Mr. Mullin is, because people are interested in zoning bylaws, and I remember at the last meeting, you gave an update to the bylaws review committee about your consultations with somebody that we may be able to bring on board to serve as our zoning consultant, which was passed at the last town meeting, the $50,000, to have somebody help us with the reviewing and recodifying the zoning bylaws.
That's right. I put a, a request to my fellow town councils on the Mass Municipal Law Association listserv for recommendations, and the only name I got back was the one name I would have recommended to, that's Mark Bobrowski. Professor Bobrowski is the author of the go-to reference work for Massachusetts land use and planning law. I have, I'm familiar with him from our association, also from being on the other side of him in court, and also because Linfield, which I also represent, hired him to do the recodification of their zoning bylaws. So he's excellent. It's like hiring IBM. No one's going to blame us if it goes badly, we hired the best. And he, he was impressed by our existing bylaws, and said that the quote he'd give us would be for $45,000, which is less, I think, than he charged Linfield. Linfield's zoning bylaws were in really rough shape when he got them.
Thank you very much. The next one is the Wakefield Housing Authority. The Wakefield Housing Authority and the Veterans Advisory Board that I'm the liaison to is a little bit different, because there's a paid employee, an executive director, and who has to work with the members of the Wakefield Housing Authority. Wakefield Housing Authority has five members, three that are elected, one who's the tenant board, a member, member who's appointed by the town council, and then the vacant state representative one that we've talked about before, that we had to advertise recently because the state failed to, to give us a replacement. They meet monthly at Crystal View Apartments. I have found that the interaction between the executive director and the members of the board is very positive, they work well together. Maureen Hickey is very well prepared when she comes to the meetings. She provides them the monthly municipal depository trust reports, she presents them the financial statements, and she prevents them the occupancy report and waitlist every month. Some of the things that they've done over the last few months, they've had three meetings since I, I was appointed as a liaison, they've had a fair housing marketing plan, Harts Hill had a window project that was completed, Elm Street has a siding project, there's a Crystal View capital plan, they were awarded an ARPA award from the state that gave them an upgrade to the fire alarm system, and replacing the panels at Harts Hill, and gave them some extra capital funds. The last one that I'm the liaison to is the Veterans Advisory Board. They've had four meetings since I was assigned as the liaison. They have a very good rapport with our veteran services officer, Dave Mangan, and the nine members, they have one vacancy right now, of the Veterans Advisory Board. I find they also have a very excellent working relationship that I can discern from going to the meetings. They're going to commence the coffee socials again on January 8th. They just donated service flags that are on display at town hall. We have the Veterans Day celebration coming up as well. And another thing that the Veterans Advisory Board is interested in doing, and they're consulting with the bylaws review committee, is to, is to get some language in the, in the bylaws about the Veterans Advisory Board. So I did some research for the VAB, I presented that to them, and then I put them in contact with the bylaws review committee, which I can look at on the backend, because I'm the liaison to that one as well. But thank you for the opportunity to give a report.
Thank you. And do you just want to share when Veterans, Veterans Day events are in our town?
Well, there's two that are going to be that day. So the Veteran Field Dedication is going to be on November 11th at 9 o'clock, and then right after that, on November 11th at 11 o'clock, or 1100, as we say in the military. And it's always November 11th at 1100, is going to be the Veterans Day celebration at the Galvin Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Jambrowski?
So I have got two liaisons assignments. One is Department of Public Works, which I think we've gone through in sufficient detail, so I won't go any further than to say that they're doing an excellent job. The second is the Historical Commission, and I have been working a lot with them, attending, attending their meetings. Nancy Bertrand is a wealth of knowledge as far as, you know, any, anything related to, to Wakefield history. There had been a lot of input from the Historical Commission relative to the Floral Way project. I think ultimately, the project was a better project as a result. I was kind of straddling between DPW and, and Historical Commission, and I think our town engineer, Bill Renaud, was incredibly responsive to them. He presented to Historical Commission so that they understood a lot of the selections and choices. There was a lot of historical accuracy or homage that was given to that project, and I think ultimately, the end result, you know, speaks for itself. The, the fence along, you see now, it's just kind of like chains, and it's that, it's pillars, basically, I think granite pillars, that will have a fence more keeping line with what had been there in 1940 or thereabouts. Bigger picture with Historical Commission, and one thing that I've spoken with them about and want to try to, to continue to advocate for is how we can better integrate their work and their knowledge and their interest in the projects that we're doing around town, and just be at things like Floral Way. But also, I'd love to be able to see them be better engaged with the ZBA, for example, when we, when there are a lot of design elements that come into play with a lot of proposed projects. There's a lot of rich, rich historical history and architecture within our town. Much of it has been covered up unfortunately, or stripped of a lot of our buildings, but those that do still exist, you know, there, there is, there is, in one respect, a push to try to preserve that, but also to work on projects going forward that are more reflective of the history of architecture within our community. And I think we don't have enough of that. And, and the sense that I've gotten, and I think it's probably been a year or two now that I've, I've worked with the, the commission, is I think they just want to make sure that their voice is being heard. They have a lot of good input, but I feel like they often feel like they're, they're not as engaged as a partner in processes as they could and should be. And so that's something that, you know, I want to advocate for them in that regard going forward, and think about ways in which they can be integrated into what DPW is doing, what comes before, before ZBA, you know, just kind of across the board, how we can better use them as, as the great resource that they are for, for better projects and better preservation within town. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed, and I do think I'm looking back at my notes when Nancy came and presented at our last meeting, that we have 350 structures, historic structures in town, and so I think that Floral Way example is a great example of, of better coordination. So when we all see those opportunities of our commissions and boards kind of, again, collaborating, I think that's, that's a great example of when it worked out well. Thank you. Counselor Denny?
Okay, so I have some updates from Health and Wellness Department. Our Health and Wellness is the.
Health and Human Services.
Health and Human Services. Health and, I'm thinking of Bee, sorry. I'm like, doesn't sound right. Health and Human Services, formerly the Department of, our Health Department. They just got a grant from the Department of Justice and on school violence prevention. It's a million-dollar grant over three years. It's a, it's a grant that they put in for Melrose, Wakefield, and Stonem, but what they're going to use that grant for is each community will get an, an adjustment counselor out of that, and then there's going to be money left over that they can use for training. So that's really exciting. Their social service coordinator started about a month and a half ago, and has hit the ground running, and is already making an impact. And we talked about, you know, doing things that, like even helping clients signing up for cost savings through WMLD, which is, you know, kind of like, wow, look at that, people need help with that. So it's, it's a really great position that's working out very well so far. Hired a full-time inspector, part of the shared community grant, increasing the number of inspections and the quality of the inspections as well, and really looking at not having the inspectors play a punitive role. I mean, we want to make sure that every, the restaurants are, are safe and, are safe, but also being taken a more proactive role in terms of focusing on, focusing on like food safety and, and education around that. So, you know, cultivating food safety procedures. There's an upcoming, upcoming mental health first aid course that's going to be starting. The first session is on October 19th, from 5 to 9 PM. They're going to have dinner, discounted rate of $15 for this, and so if you're a parent, if you have any interaction with kids, basically, with youth, it's a great thing to attend. And space is limited, so the registration's open, and it's, it's going to be really great, because it's going to teach you to identify and understand and respond to signs of mental health and substance use challenges, which is really important. I think early, early signs to prevent the initiation of substance abuse, or helping to get help for mental health issues early will be good. That, first one's October 19th, 5 to 9, at the Civic Center, and then there's going to be another one on Wednesday, October 26th, from 9 to 1 PM, at the BB Library Lecture Hall. Let's see, oh, they did 200, 200 flu shots at the, at Wakefield Town Day. So that's fantastic. So that's fantastic. They're beginning quarterly newsletter for updates, and I think that's a really great way of being transparent and letting the community know what's going on. So a lot of great things going on, doing great work there. And I also serve as liaison for the master plan and working on the advisory group that we have met, we met a couple weeks ago as the advisory group, and I have to say, I think this group's fantastic because of the diversity of perspectives that's in this town, who's on this advisory group, people who have lived here for a long time, people who have just moved here, people with a lot of different backgrounds that are really useful in, you know, whether they're working in engineering, or, or development, or working on, you know, conservation. They bring a lot of professional input into the process as well. And there's going to be, our public workshop is going to be reviewing two of the eight master plan topics on transportation sustainability and climate resilience. That's going to be October 19th at 6:30 at the Galvin. And I just have to say, is that, you know, this master plan is really, really important, and I hear a lot of people, and I see a lot of things on social media, about people being concerned about the future of our town and, and what's happening with our town. And I tell you, this is just an opportunity to bring people into the process and to have a role. If you have an interest in the future of our town and you want to have an input, I really advise you to go to this, because this master plan is going to, you know, basically decide our future, physical and economic development plan. So it's really important. It's going to be a strategic roadmap, and everybody's, it's community input. So that's my pitch, but I hope that everybody does go. You'll see it on social media as well. But I do think it's really important. So that is the update. So, thank you.
October 19th?
October, yes.
Is it only a lot? Is it only?
No, I'm sorry, it's in person. It's in person at 6:30 at the Galvin. There's no hybrid.
There's no virtual option.
No. No. So there's no virtual option. So they, they've had them virtual, and then they're trying them in person, so.
Great. You did the opposite of Counselor Jambrowski, because we are planning to invite Health and Human Services to a future meeting?
Yes.
But you just told everything that they're doing, but maybe we're.
It's very, a lot of exciting things, and you know what? We made a, you know, the town needs substantial investment in that, in that department, and I think it's paying really big dividends. I mean, they're doing a lot, they're getting a lot of grants. I mean, a lot of different grants. I didn't even cover everything. It's making a huge difference in our community, so I, I think it's, I'm excited about it.
That's great, thank you. Jonathan?
Sure. So a few updates for, for my areas. I want to start with the youth council, which I will say continues to be like my favorite part of being a town council, is being the liaison to that group, just an amazing group of young people. They are sort of in the process of kind of reorganizing now that the school year has started. So just recently elected their new officers and assigned their liaison assignments. So just want to highlight their new leadership. Vanessa Westlake is their chair, Madeline Naper is their vice chair, and Ali Atui is their secretary, all of whom, you know, I think will be great leaders of a group of great leaders as it is. They're also working on their agenda for the year and some of the things that they want to prioritize. And a couple of projects that they've started talking about. One is both continuing the Snow Angels program, but also expanding it to a Leaf Angels program. So look forward to seeing that and appreciate all the dedication that goes into that. You know, looking at getting period products into town buildings here in Wakefield and also working with businesses and particularly restaurants in town with regard to that, having that availability. And then also looking at how they can engage with younger kids, particularly at the middle school level. You know, we're fortunate where a number of the now high schoolers that are very active in the Youth Council sort of started as middle schoolers. And so continuing to kind of keep that pipeline up is important. And that's something else that they've talked about as a priority. So really, again, continue to very much enjoy working with them. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to get to know some of them. On the school side, I'll talk about sort of buildings in a second. But, you know, the school year is in full swing right now, you know, and generally is going well. You know, as always, our administrators, our teachers, all of our paraprofessionals are doing incredible work. And I would say that work continues to be challenging. I talked to Superintendent Lyons. Last week, we had a long chat. And, you know, he's seeing, and, you know, I've heard from some of the principals as well, that we're seeing sort of greater variability than ever in terms of student behavior, in terms of educational attainment and educational challenges that students are facing, social dynamics in school. It is a much different, much more different environment than I think, you know, we've seen in prior years, certainly pre-pandemic. And so that continues to be a challenge is how do you create sort of an individualized educational experience for a group of students whose needs are really much broader than we've seen historically. So in light of that, among the priorities that the school department has as they're looking ahead to the budget for next year are, you know, focusing on doubling down on counseling, on special education, and on student support. And really on figuring out how, you know, managing behavior and other issues can be infused into teacher training and the curriculum overall. Because again, this is really where the challenge is, as I'm sure we might imagine. You know, academically, you know, I think folks have seen in the news, you know, MCAS scores across the state were down last year. Wakefield was not an exception to that, not surprisingly, although the drop in Wakefield was a little bit less significant than the state. And Superintendent Lyons and his team are, you know, digging into those results now and, you know, looking at ways from a curriculum planning, teacher training perspective, you know, how we can kind of continue to use that data to identify the areas of need and address them. So finally, on the building side, I'll get to the school in a second. Public Safety Building is making good progress. We actually are about to sort of transition phases with the dispatch area and the lobby reopening, I think within a matter of days, if not weeks.
Next week, hopefully.
Yeah, so that's really great. You know, the project has definitely faced some challenges in the environment we're in, you know, with construction costs and with labor, but it is on track and works proceeding, which is exciting and obviously much needed for our public safety personnel. We did get, obviously, a pretty lengthy update on the Wakefield High School building project. But just to, you know, maybe kind of highlight a couple of things and share a couple of updates coming out of our last meeting. We are due to submit the schematic design to the Mass School Building Authority at the end of this month. I believe it's the 21st, if I'm remembering correctly, but I might be wrong on that date. And then that will go in front of the MSBA for approval to go to the next stage, the funding stage, at the end of December. We have gotten updated cost estimates for the school. And unfortunately, but probably not surprisingly, those estimates have grown pretty significantly. One of the things that I want to highlight is the reason for that growth is exclusively related to inflation in the construction sector. So just as a data point, when the initial estimates were prepared back in April, we were looking at construction cost inflation at that point for calendar 2022 of somewhere in the 4% to 5% range. The actuals emerged at 15% plus. And so, you know, the scope of the project hasn't changed, but, you know, the costs have increased significantly because of that. The other thing that we're seeing is that the estimated reimbursement from the MSBA is lower than we anticipated in April. And the biggest reason for that, and I do want to make sure that we highlight this because I think there's been some misleading information, both in sort of social media and actually in the items article yesterday. The big reason for that gap is that the MSBA applies a number of funding caps to projects that they fund. And one of them, and I think the one that's most significant, is that there's a cap of $360 per square foot on construction costs. That cap hasn't moved very much in the last few years. Of course, what's happened in the meantime is construction costs themselves have gone up significantly. And so what we're seeing for our project and what we're seeing actually for pretty much every school building project that is in flight right now is that the actual construction cost is somewhere in the range of $700, $800, $900 per square foot, again, compared to a cap of $360 for the MSBA. So that's a real challenge, obviously, for us and really for any school building project. I mentioned last time, you know, through the Mass Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee, this is something that we've been talking about. I have reached out to our legislative delegation to raise the issue as well. And I do really want to commend, you know, both Representative Lippert-Garabedian's office and Senator Lewis's offices for getting back to me right away and also for engaging with the leadership in their respective chambers on this issue and with the leadership at the MSBA. So I hope that, you know, we'll have some success working with our delegation to address some of that issue. Because again, I think that is something that obviously is concerning for us, but really for any community other than the wealthiest, wealthiest communities in the state. The caps that the MSBA are applying are, you know, potentially prohibitive. So more to come on that. In light of all of that, though, we are in good shape for the schematic design. I'm really excited about the building design that we've put together. And there will be a public forum for that next Tuesday. So if you want a week of civic engagement, you've got the Master Planning Forum on Wednesday. Tuesday, and this will be virtual, there will be another info session for the high school. So hopefully folks will turn in for that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Did you reach out to Representative Blong's office as well?
I did. I have not heard back from him.
Counselor Smith-Gafford?
I have. I will start with the Police Department because they were here at our last meeting. So I don't have a whole lot of update from them. I did talk to Chief Scory. He did add that they very much enjoyed being at Town Day and being part of that, so, as we all did. I also have Traffic Advisory Committee, which has taken a bit of a hiatus while Lieutenant Anderson was doing his training at Quantico. And so that, it will be meeting again October 21st, I believe. Is that the Friday?
Friday, October 21st.
Right. Friday, October 21st. It's going to be quite a long meeting, but, because there's a lot of things on the agenda, including some additional discussion around the vocational school and the Farm Street area and other things that, again, since he's been away, they're working on. I did get a bit of clarification around the grant that Chief Scory mentioned when he was here for safety, road safety. That's a grant that they apparently have had in the past years. And you either apply for an enforcement or for a equipment. And in the past, they've had equipment and they, in fact, still have some to deploy, but much of it has been deployed. So this round is really on enforcement, which I don't think I quite appreciated when he was here talking about it. Not only is it enforcement, like, you know, writing tickets or talking with people about, but it's also campaigns. You know, kind of the ones we're used to, the clicker ticket or things like that. And so, you know, if we or the community has any suggestions on some, you know, kind of safety campaigns around road safety, I think that they would be open to them. And as I said to the DPW folks who were here earlier, great collaboration with the DPW. I mean, so much of what happens with traffic and signage and painting and all of those only happens because of the partnership with DPW. Finally, I have the Environmental Sustainability Committee, which has been really busy. In fact, decided that they wanted to take on so many things this year that they finally bit the bullet and set up subcommittees. And so there's no week that goes by that there's not an environmental meeting happening pretty much in town. The subcommittees are Waste Reduction. And part of that will be, again, kind of educating and trying to enforce some of the plastic bylaws that went into effect. We're hoping to work with Health and Human Services on that with the new inspectors taking over. That Land Protection, a lot of work on trails and open spaces. Looking at possibly proposing a greenhouse gas inventory for the town. A very active community education subcommittee that, if you follow the Environmental Sustainability Committee on Facebook, you'll see much more activity there, tips and activities around sustainability around town. And they actually were at Town Day and at the farmer's market the weekend before. So getting out into the community. We have a new volunteer coordinator. So if you're not on the committee, you know, we always say, we always have interest in these committees and we say we want to use people. And so they actually have set up a process around getting volunteers involved in town on sustainability. And then there's some smaller groups kind of following sustainability issues on the school project as well as the Green Communities Proposal and when we have to implement that. And just Eileen Collaren has been named as the School Committee Representative on ESC. So we welcome her and we should be welcoming a new student. I think those, in the next round when we vote on the applications that came in recently.
Yep, at our next meeting.
So that's all, that's all I have.
That's great. Thank you. I will do mine really quickly. One, I am liaison to the Finance Committee. We have a tri-board meeting coming up on October 27th at the Galvin Middle School. It will be hybrid.
Hybrid, that would be hybrid, yes.
So you can show up or watch us via Zoom, but October 27th to hear Finance Committee, School Committee, and the Town Council talk about next year's budget already. I'm liaison to the Capital Planning Committee. That kind of takes the summer and fall off. They are starting to have regular meetings as they discuss some capital projects for next year. And so they will start, they have started scheduling those. As Jonathan mentioned, the school, I'm on the School Building Committee liaison. And October 18th is the public forum, the next public forum to hear about our new high school proposal. So I think we, I can't even keep all the dates straight. But I think every day of the week, there's a meeting for you next week, October 18th. And then finally, I'm liaison to the HRC. They had a really successful event for Hispanic Heritage Month that Counselor Jambrowski, myself, and Steve went to. The three of us did not dance. But our town assessor could not leave the dance floor.
Then we have them on tape.
And we have video and photos of it. They also have a couple of events coming up to celebrate and to honor Indigenous People Day. So there's a family-friendly art project this Sunday about Turtle Island at 11:30 at the Civic Center. And then they have, they are organizing a talk with Claudia Foxtrey, who's a nationally renowned Indigenous speaker, on 10/27, with the day we will be at our tri-board meeting. But follow them on Facebook or the town's website for more information on that. And Counselor McLean was not here to do his updates, so we will hear about his updates at a future meeting. And I do, I want to thank all the liaisons, but also thank all of these boards. Most of all of these boards and committees are volunteers. So I thank the staff, but also really thank the volunteers who dedicate their time to creating subcommittees and putting on events and just doing great work. So thank you. And thank you for, Counselors, for those updates. Too much going on. Item eight, appointment, Special Municipal Employee Designation for Special Counsel for a Vocational School. And I will pass the microphone to Tom Mullins.
Well, in the past, as you know, Attorney McGrail has represented the town pro bono before local boards in matters where I would have a conflict because I represent and advise those boards. And you have designated as a Special Municipal Employee, any lawyer who serves the town without compensation before its boards. The reason you did that is that absent that designation, Brian or any other lawyer so serving would suffer because of his free service because it would make him a municipal employee. And as such, he would then be barred from representing anyone before local boards other than the town itself. Well, now, the Vocational School would like to hire someone, could be Brian McGrail, doesn't have to be, to represent the school in connection with their new school building project, which of course is located in Wakefield, so this would be before Wakefield boards. This engagement would not be pro bono. That is, the school anticipates paying its lawyer for his work. But there is a problem. State ethics law is interpreted by the courts to mean that if you are a municipal employee of a district, such as the Vocational District, then you automatically become a municipal employee of each and every constituent community. So a lawyer's engagement by the Voke would make him ineligible to appear before any local boards in any of the 12 cities and towns comprising the Voke District, which would be a huge detriment for any lawyer who does that kind of work for a living. The solution is that the Town Council in Wakefield can designate as a Special Municipal Employee, any lawyer who serves as Special Counsel to the Voke for purposes of seeking land use permits and approvals. And with that designation, any lawyer so serving could continue to represent clients before Wakefield boards. Let me anticipate some questions. Why not designate a particular lawyer as a Special Municipal Employee? The answer is, we can't. Special Municipal Employee designations are always made with respect to the position and not a particular individual. Another question is, is a lawyer eligible for Special Municipal Employee status if, as in this case, his engagement is not pro bono? If, that is, if he is being paid? And the answer is, yes, it can be. In order to be a Special Municipal Employee, you either have to be uncompensated or the job permits personal or private employment during regular working hours, or it involves compensation for less than 800 hours a year. And in this case, in all likelihood, this will be well under 800 hours in a year. And it certainly does permit personal or private employment. And finally, you may wonder, does this mean that if Wakefield grants Special Municipal Employee status to any lawyer who represents the Voke on this basis, that by representing the Voke, he would prevent himself still from representing clients in the other 11 communities? And the answer is yes. If the lawyer who gets this position wants to represent clients before the boards of Melrose, he has to go to the Melrose City Council and get the same designation. Ditto with Chelsea and Everett and Revere and so forth. So the motion that I would propose that you pass would be to designate as a Special Municipal Employee, any lawyer who serves as Special Counsel to the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School for purposes of seeking land use permits and approvals. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions?
I'll just comment that, Tom, you have made this out to be a really, like, attractive position to any attorney with all those caveats. Like, God help anyone who actually wants to have this position. Thank you.
Counselor Smith-Gafford?
Does this cover lawyers who are already representing the Vocational School, like, retroactively?
Well, this would cover any lawyer from- Well, this would cover any lawyer from the time of your vote forward who represents the VOC as a special counsel, that is not their regular counsel, for the purposes of seeking land use permits and approvals. And again, since the VOC only owns property in Wakefield, it's really only somebody who would be appearing before the Wakefield ZBA, Concom, or Planning Board.
So somebody who's already appeared before a Wakefield board on behalf of the vocational school, could they become, could they become the special?
Yes, they would become a special municipal employee if they continue to so serve for the VOC.
But is there a conflict if they have in the past before we granted this designation?
Well, if they have in the past, then they may have had a problem in the past. Going forward, their problem would be cured.
Okay. Okay. I guess, I guess the one thing, too, I think when we've talked about special municipal employees in the past week, maybe because we were pro bono, so maybe that is not the case here, but we tried to open it so that it just doesn't go to a certain person. So if we maybe could suggest to the Northeast Metropolitan Regional School or share our policy that they, you know, open it to attract maybe different people or more diversity, I would, you know, I don't know whether we can compel them to do so.
We can share it.
But we could share it.
Yeah. Again, the, the vote, though, the designation would not be to, with respect to any particular individual.
Okay, but we could share a kind of, we don't want it just to be a handpicked, you know, without a process.
Right.
Any other questions?
Do you want me to attempt the motion?
Tom, I was just going to ask if Tom could read it once again.
Sure, sure. To designate as a special municipal employee any lawyer who serves as special counsel to the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School for purposes of seeking land use permits and approvals.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Just made sure you had the word district. It would be Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District, Northeast District.
School District, yes.
Yeah, just for completeness purposes.
Right.
That's all I have.
Great. Catch Attorney Vincent. All in favor?
Too many attorneys.
Six, zero. Great. Thank you, Tom, for that. And I, just echoing Counselor Smith Galvin's of, I think we should share our process with them. And maybe someone who sits on the building committee, that sits there as well.
I have no appointing authority, but I will share the process.
That would be great. I think that would be great. Okay, item nine A, donations. We have a request to accept and expand a gift or gifts in the amount of $50 to the Human Rights Commission from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Second. Great, any discussion? All in favor? I, six, zero. Item nine B, request to accept and expand a gift or gifts in the amount of $100 to the council on aging from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I, six, zero. Thank you. Item 10, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve our September 28th executive session Town Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? I, six, zero. And item 10B, approval of the September 28th Town Council meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item 11, announcements. We did a lot of updating meetings. The calendar is looking great on our town website. Please check it out in addition to calendar updates.
Yeah, very briefly, first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone involved in Town Day this Saturday, which I thought was a tremendous success, and I hope this is the first annual event that we do. You know, police, fire, and DPW, the Chamber of Commerce, and in particular, our Community and Economic Development Director, Aaron Kekinda, and our Communications Director, Jen McDonald. It really was a tremendous success. And Sherry, of course. Sherry, Sherry always deserves thanks because nothing happens in Town Hall without Sherry Dalton. So really just a wonderful event, and I am so grateful for all the work that went into that. All the committees that participated, all of the community groups and artisans that participated. You know, one of the things that I thought was particularly exciting was to see so many kind of new people go from table to table and actually, like, express an interest in signing up and participating in some of these committees and community groups, you know, where a community runs on volunteers, and I think that was clear from, from this past weekend. So just wanted to recognize that and also just highlight Critter, sorry, Creatures and Critters, the art exhibit at Albion Culture Exchange, starts this Friday and is running through the end of October, so check that out. And then just finally, I'll be having office hours next Wednesday immediately before our public forum for, for the master plan at 5:30, starting at the library.
Thank you. Counselor Jambrowski and then Counselor Danny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to mention an event that we had today. It was the Meet the Town Counselors at the Senior Center. I was there with Counselor Vincent and Counselor Chines. It was a great event. It checked three boxes. One was seniors and talking with them and answering questions that they had had about the goings on of town, and they had a lot of great questions and a lot of great input. Two was supporting local business. Special thanks to Sabatino's who donated all the food for today. It was eggplant parm, and everyone enjoyed it. It was great, and they're a great local business and a great community partner. And three was, was the VOC. And the Culinary Arts Department in the VOC baked this incredible chocolate cake. It was really good, and I actually brought some home.
Where are our slices?
I know, I know, I realize it in the car. But it was, it was so good to see, you know, that coming together and great conversation, great day, and it's, it's always, I always loved being at the Senior Center, and it was a great opportunity to, to, you know, connect with those folks, and I really enjoyed it.
And the cake was great.
It was, yes, indeed, yes, yes. It was, it was really, really well done. Just also want to remind everyone that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Wakefield Alliance Against Violence is always there with resources, you know, available. Waveonline.org is their, their web address if you want to go there and just get some more information, but it's so incredibly important, you know, this, this, it's an epidemic we're dealing with in our country, and, you know, the more we talk about it, the more awareness there is on, on, on the issue, the more resources that we put out there, and the more we can educate folks on knowing that, that there are, you know, that there are safe places and alternatives, that's really important. So I would just encourage everyone to, to be aware, to, to be vocal, and if you see something, you know, do say something and talk to someone, and, you know, waveonline.org is a great resource in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Danny?
I was very disappointed to have missed lunch with the Senior, at the Senior Center, but I had to, I had to teach, so I couldn't get out of that. So sorry to have missed it, but it sounds like it was a lot of fun. I just want to say, is it Town Day? I did make Town Day, and I had so much fun. The Bike Valet was a huge success. I got there, I saw all these bikes, so that was great.
Did you get there by bicycle?
I didn't get there by bicycle, no. I did not. But I did see all the bikes there, so commend those who did ride their bike. I live way in Greenwood, way, way, on the Melrose line, so. But I do want to thank all the town, the, the people in Town Hall who made this happen, the volunteers, fire, and police. What I loved about it was that it was, it was everybody. It was people who were young, who were old, people who had kids, people who didn't have kids. And I reconnected with a lot of people that I haven't seen since my children were in school, so I spent a lot of time chatting with them, so I didn't make it to every single table around, so the day went by, but, you know, it was really, it was a really great opportunity, and everybody I know had a great time, so I'm looking forward to that in the future. Also want to say is that Wakefield 101 is happening on Thursday, October 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Civic Center. I've never been to a Wakefield 101, so I'm very excited about that. So I'm excited about that. And that is it.
Thank you. Counselor Smith Galvin?
Actually, I don't have any announcements, but just maybe something for our future agenda. I think the MAPC Bike Ped Plan is supposed to come in front of us, and I guess I just am wondering where that is, so, so that we can make sure that Counselor Danny has a route to get to.
Yes, yes, yes.
To the common for the next town day.
I have to say, I get a little bit nervous. We need bike paths, so I get a little bit nervous on. I would feel much more secure. I get very nervous about driving on, riding my bike on roads, so.
Imagine if you had a bundle of cardboard, too, that you'd have to drop off in the pit. You definitely want a, a secure, safe route there.
I took a chair, and I almost suffered a...
Yes, we will add that, we will add that to a future update. I think, I think there's a lot of great stuff happening on around biking with our, really a rail trail.
Other than people were super excited with the Bike Valet. Everybody's talking about the rail trail. People, you see more, I mean, I was, I did a walk on it at the schools a couple weeks ago. At the Walton, there's not enough bike racks there, like, you know, there's probably three times the amount of bikes compared to the bike rack, so we're not Amsterdam yet, but we're getting there.
Steve, do you have any updates?
Just, just, I want to, just follow very quickly on the Town Day. Great job by the town staff. I know Aaron, Jean, and Sherry in particular, they worked many, many hours behind the scenes, and the partnership with the chamber is unbelievable. And, you know, John Stominski and his whole, and staff, they were there every day, and really shows what we can do when we work together. And I really think more and more that this is kind of a model for the events in the future, so we'll be looking at this in the future and using this as our model. It was very, fire and police really liked it because it was very contained, as well as emergency services, we got ambulances there, touch a truck, great success, and I spent a lot of time towards the end at the high school presentation, and such excitement from people coming up and looking at the plans. And I would ask you, any suggestions anybody has? We are going to have a debriefing next week, or the week after, I guess the week after, and to see, what did we do well, what can we do better, what would we change next year? We'd love to hear from the public on it and from the council in particular, because we certainly want to, you know, when it's fresh in our minds, we can think of the things that we can do better. And Wakefield 101 was mentioned. We, as of this morning, had 61 new residents that had already signed up.
Wow, really?
Really, it looks like it's getting a good, a good participation, anyway, so, always fun.
So I think the highlight of kind of our updates are, our events are back in person, and that's really great. And I think, you know, Town Day was a great success. My cousin got married at the exact same time, so family obligation, but I've...
So it wasn't the wedding that we saw at Town Day?
Oh, was there a wedding? No, that was not, that would have been easy.
I'm completely brass man.
But Wakefield, Wakefield 101 is, is one of my favorite events. I'm so glad that it's back. It's just a great opportunity for new people in town to learn about all these great resources that we have in town and to meet a lot of people. And just like the senior, the council on aging, we used to do those regularly, and I'm really glad that they will be back. We will plan another one, definitely before St. Patrick's Day, but sometime soon we will do another one. So that's great. Tom or Sherry, any updates?
My wife and I are confirmed hermits, but even we went to Town Day and had a nice time.
Did, did you and your wife win the cornhole tournament?
We watched as somebody was down. My wife and I did lose to the champions.
Because you made it that far in the tournament?
No, 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 we lost them in an early round, but we still, I'm saying we gave them the toughest game.
That's great. I'm sorry, Sherry?
Yeah, that's okay. So the Bike Pedestrian Plan will be on our next Town Council agenda, October 24th, for the review of the final report.
Good. That is great. Items 12, matters not anticipated for agenda. Okay, and then item 13, our next regular Town Council meeting will be Monday, October 24th at 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second, great. All in favor? Great, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.